Good evening and welcome everyone to Spokane City Council Legislative Agenda. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcome other tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, if you call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you, and again tonight, Poetry at the Podium was originally created in 2019 by Spokane poet laureate Mark Anderson along with Spokane Arts to give local poets and poetry enthusiasts the opportunity to make their voices heard at council meetings in a unique and artful way. This opportunity reminds our community that poetry can play an important part in the civic realm. Tonight, we have Angela Gem Petry reading Courtesy. Please come up to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you, City Council President Wilkerson and City Council Members. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for your commitment to our beautiful city and to the arts. I'm Angela Gem Petry, born and raised in Spokane. I currently reside in the mid-century gem of a neighborhood that is Boulevard Park. This is my poem, Courteous. I miss it. I miss that connection to have had it and to force it now. Connection. Even if you don't want to see me as a human, here I am, holding this door open, offering a smile. The very same smile that adorned that beautiful face, mascara, lipstick, foundation, framed by perfect salon blonde hair. That same beating heart offering kindness, now hoping for kindness and discouraged by your disdain because the barber shop fade, the Levi's, muddy boots, woman on my arm, and always that furtive glance at my chest, the breasts? I'm an uncomfortable reminder. I'm a butch lesbian, a term defensively cherished. It is not popular. It is not Costco mom. It is not acceptable, but it is me finally spitting into my skin. And it is honest, and isn't that what connection is? Honesty? Our courteous hearts saying hello? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Angela. Now, we're going to go into our board and commission appointments. We have before us tonight two appointments to the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability Board, a Ryan Arndt and a Claire Cooney, and one reappointment to the Spokane Arts Board, Don Hamilton.
And we have three folks signed up to testify tonight on this item, Shooter Maverick, Justin Holler, and Sunshine Wigan. Justin, you want to come down?
Hi, my name is Justin Holler, District One. I think this whole climate change thing is a hoax, and no lender will loan money on property if they think beachfront property will be underwater and electric cars. And this is about the climate change one, zero, three, zero, I'm sorry, zero, zero, three, zero. The board should be completely disbanded, especially if it's a paid position. It's a waste of time. It's a bunch of people just glad handing themselves and, for lack of a better phrase, doing something circle in a famous movie by Steve Martin. Some will get that reference, some won't. But they're circling around each other, for sure, in a herky something fashion. And it's just sad to see all these resources and all this intelligence being wasted on something that doesn't matter. You know, it's really unfortunate. There are more important things to tackle, like the shooting, the shootings, the stabbings, the overdoses. Nobody seems to have a board for getting rid of the people shooting up and making life egregious for at least two or three other people. And it's sad that your priority is climate change. You know, Volvo did a study that it takes 75 to 90,000 miles to offset the carbon footprint of even building an electric car. Volvo put out that study. You can Google it or Bing it or whatever your website, your hosting preference is. But it's just, it's egregious. It's a waste of time. I really wish you would spend more time on something that actually mattered, like fixing potholes, fixing, filling unpaved roads, and not building bike lanes to nowhere. But I'll touch on that later.
Thank you, Justin. Please, there is no clapping, booing.
But did you suspend the rules today?
Justin?
Sunshine?
Did you suspend the rules?
No sunshine. Mr. Maverick? I don't see him online.
Mr. Maverick? I don't see him. Any council commentary? All those in favor of the appointments to the boards and commission as read, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Thank you, Councilmember Klitschke. Any noes? Abstentions? Those are approved. Thank you. On to our consent agenda for this evening. We have several comments. We're going to start with Alex Stein, Shooter Maverick, and then Justin Holler. I think Alex is joining by video, Webex.
You can hit star three, Alex, if you're online.
Not that. Is Shooter Maverick?
No.
He was going to call in? No? Justin Holler, welcome back.
Long time no see. Are we corralling everything into one thing, or are we separating the OPRs from the CPRs?
We are doing the consent agenda right now, Mr. Holler.
So that'd be CPRs?
Yes.
Okay, regarding CPR 002, the 12.6, let me read this specifically, $12,606.859.99 for parks and libraries. What are we getting for that money? What are we getting for that money? Why do we have beautiful libraries for homeless people to hang out at and decorate, for lack of a better phrase, with their solids and liquids? Why do we have lush green grass for the dwelling lists and the trustees of modern chemistry to do the same thing and more? You know, I just, I don't get why we're spending all this money and where it's going. There's no line item here. It's just, it's just a blank check. Oh, we'll just, we'll just spend 12 million. Well, what do we get for our 12.6 million? You know, you guys have raised your salaries. Some of you are making 68,000, can't even show up and then leave when I talk, and some of you are making more than that as City Council President. And what do we get for, do we get anything kind of value for our money? You know, it's just offensive that you just blanket spend this money and there's no accountability for the money you spend. Just, you know, a lot of us in this room have had to tighten up our budgets. You know, costs of things are not going down, yet you guys keep raising the budget, and for what? You know, you got, you got cars parked in the bike lane, you got potholes, unpaved roads, and yet we spend all this money on parks and libraries? Separate the parks and libraries. Let's see what each budget has versus having a conglomerate, and then maybe we can get a more accurate description on who gets what and the disproportional amounts.
Thank you, Justin. Next is Derek Ozaro, and then Sunshine Wigan.
Derek Ozaro, supporting District One. This week, $23,379 again to Julia Garcia, who shut down Prop One, protecting children in schools and parks against taxpayers' votes. Lisa Brown, Dillon, Klitschke, and Zepone block Cathcart and Bingle reinstating Prop One, supporting voters to protect the children in Spokane. The more money you give to Jill's Helping Hands, the more money you give directly to Julia Garcia. Starting in 2019, she paid herself $24,910. She now paid, she's now up to $83,800 in 2024. The more she takes, the more she pays herself. She's into it for the money. You can kiss the upcoming Parks Levy goodbye from the voters of Spokane because Julia Garcia agreed for more money in her pocket. Prop One was to protect the children's schools and parks free of fentanyl. Catholic charities last week, $205,505. This week, $103,9781. Lisa Brown came to town to keep money from Olympia flowing to Catholic charities because Nadine Woodward was against letting Robert Kan and Jonathan Mullahan expanding its real estate empire negatively affecting neighborhoods in Spokane with no solution to homeless issue. Lisa Brown financed Camp Hope for Julia Garcia. She secretly financed Equality Inn against the neighborhood in West Hills that is now expanding. Lisa Brown financed the Trent Shelter. She now blames Nadine Woodward for its failure. Get rid of Catholic charities to get rid of Lisa Brown, who has done nothing to address the fentanyl crisis killing mothers and fathers' children in Spokane, a city with three and a half times the national average of babies born addicted to fentanyl. Spokane has nothing to be proud of with these facts. Dillon, Klitschke, Zepone, what ordinance have you brought to the council to combat the fentanyl crisis in Spokane? All you do is block every move Cathcart and Bingle attempt to support taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Is Sunshine in the house? I do not see Sunshine. Is there any council commentary on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Councilmember Klitschke?
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? The consent agenda is passed. Thank you.
Emergency ordinance, C36680, adopting an interim official control relating to off-premises alcohol outlets near public assets, adopting a new chapter 17(c)(348) of the Spokane Municipal Code, setting a public hearing, and declaring an emergency.
So, we're going to do the hearings. We need Mr. Brown to speak at all.
She read the emergency ordinance.
Oh, you read, okay. All right. No, we were going to go to Ms. Brown. We will go to Ms. Brown after this, Terry. Thank you so much. We have several comments on the emergency ordinance. I was looking for Sunshine. Is she in the house? Shooter Maverick?
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. Today, I rise in opposition of this ordinance, C36680, another proposal by Councilmen, Council Members Wilkerson and Dillon. This ordinance pretends that off-premise alcohol outlets are the real threat to our parks, schools, libraries, and transit centers. Are you kidding me? Look around, Spokane isn't being destroyed by a bottle of beer or liquor. It's being destroyed by fentanyl and meth and all these illegal drugs. I see it every day where I live, and you know where I live. You say this ordinance is about protecting low-income and non-white neighborhoods. Well, do you realize that 83%, according to the census, 83% of Spokane is white? It's not these others. I'm a minority, but I don't, I don't see that as being a big problem, but... So meanwhile, in 2000, April 2025 alone, Spokane suffered over 150-plus drug overdoses, overwhelmingly from fentanyl, not alcohol. The voters of Spokane spoke loudly when they passed Proposition One. Nearly 75% of us demanded no illegal camping near schools, parks, and daycares. And there's a big reason, because a lot of the homeless people are addicted to these drugs. And, but you guys want to make it seem like alcohol is the big problem. And obviously, I don't have much more time, but you've got my speech, so read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I'm going to speak in favor of this one. I'm going to, I'm going to vote for it. So, this one actually is similar to something that Councilmember Dillon and I had worked on about a year ago as, as the new shelter was going in, there was a liquor store that was going to be going right next to it, which to me felt very predatory, and I'll let Councilmember Dillon speak on that as well. But it felt as if it was predatory, and this certainly is a separate conversation in my mind from Proposition One, which I'm very supportive of, and Councilmember Cathcart and I are moving that forward. But I think we can do multiple things at once, even if one of them may or may not pass. I think that there's a lot of good that can still be done outside of that particular issue. And so, setting that issue aside, I think that this is a good step for the city of Spokane. Normally, I'm not in favor of emergency ordinances sort of being added to an agenda and being adopted in the same day. But there is a reason why, in this case, I would support it, and that's because, you know, there are very strong vesting laws in the state of Washington, which are very good. But for us to be able to establish this now, keep somebody from vesting in a position where we don't want them to be necessarily establishing something. And so, I speak in favor of this one. I'll be voting for it tonight. I know that there's plenty more that we can do in the city of Spokane, but every little bit, I think, is going to be helpful, and I think this is a good piece for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Bingle and I were in conversation about this early last year, and I'm really grateful that this is moving forward and really appreciate his support and acknowledgement. And the data really supports this as we worked to renew the alcohol impact area. That time where we didn't have it, we saw a 64% increase in alcohol-related crimes in that area where it did not exist. And yes, this is an emergency ordinance. It's also important to note that this is an interim ordinance, so we will have a public hearing on June 16th, and there'll also be more feedback taken during that time as we look right now at 500 feet, some parks, schools, library centers, transit centers, but also as we look at community nonprofit and treatment centers as well.
Any other council commentary? No?
I'll just say there's also a list of premises that it does not affect, and there is a legal distinction between on-premises alcohol sales and off-premises alcohol sales. And so, your bars, restaurants, breweries are not going to be as affected by this as the off-premises alcohol. And I can't give you that exact distinction right here from the dais, but there is a good distinction there. So if you want to, you can look that up, and you'll be able to see for yourself what it is. One last thing is that this is, again, a step, an interim step here or there, as Councilmember Dillon suggested. There are other things that we may want to look at. For example, for me, one that I would really want to add are recovery or addiction centers, making sure that we don't have alcohol outlets or, or other things like that, substance outlets within that 500 feet. To me, like I said, that feels predatory, especially when people are trying to get clean and sober. That, to me, feels like a bad decision for us as a city.
Well, I will be in support of this. I share, I run an assisted living facility and a young man who is going through a substance abuse recovery, and the first thing he said is, at these off-site premises is where a lot of drugs are sold and exchanged. Not only there, but at gas stations as well. There are over 29 of these little pop-up off-site locations that are right in the hearts of our neighborhoods. And that is just creating an environment where there is less safety for the people who live there, because it is a magnet. So I'll be supporting this. Again, it is an interim ordinance to give planning the opportunity to review this and see what else we can do. It's about community safety, and if we're about safety, I think this interim emergency ordinance needs to pass. No other commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, council. That was seven zero. Ms. Fister?
Now we'll go to hearings, right?
Now we will go to hearings.
H1A, vacation of Leeta Place between Inland Empire Way and the Union Pacific Railroad as requested by adjacent property owners. H1B, first reading ordinance, C36658, vacating Leeta Place between Inland Empire Way and the Union Pacific Railroad. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
This is the time and place set for the public hearing on the following matter, vacation of a public street. When all speakers have been allowed to testify, we will then take a motion to close the hearing and vote. And the first one up, Mr. Bird?
Mr. Maverick? Shooter Maverick, if you're online, you can hit star three.
All right, with that being said...
And you have Mr. Brown, Eldon Brown here.
Eldon, do you want to come up and speak to this briefly?
Good evening. Excuse me. Leeta Place is right away just on the north side of Inland Empire Way Bridge in the Leeta Valley. It's right away that absolutely you wouldn't know it's there. It goes across a field. It's just 30 feet wide. We have no city utilities in there. There's no other utility purveyor in there. So the applicant does own the property on both sides of it. They wish to just vacate that, consolidate the property for future development. So we really don't have any conditions, other than the cost of the land is $8,155. And they need to actually aggregate that one parcel that's on the south side that does it front a public right away, once it's vacated. That would be one of the conditions of the vacation. But we would recommend approval of this vacation, subject to the conditions. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah. Really quickly, Eldon, how was kind of working with the railroad through this process?
They actually didn't comment on this one, so we received nothing from the railroad on this one. Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart?
I'll make the motion to close the hearing.
All right, there's the motion. It's our second. Let's move to the second to close the hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? The hearing is closed. Now, I'll request a motion to adopt the ordinance resolution, approval, subject to conditions, as Mr. Eldon had spoken.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Fister, we'll get back on track.
Final reading ordinance, C36670, relating to regular adjustments of fees, charges, and other assessments collected by the city of Spokane to ensure they reflect the actual cost of service delivery in amending section 4.02.010 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
And again, I have Mr. Maverick and Sunshine signed up for this.
All right. 36667? It was only Sunshine? Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, very briefly, I'll just say it's a good little ordinance here. I think it'll do some good things, and I just want to really appreciate Councilmember Klitschke for all the collaboration on this, bringing me into this conversation. I think that was a good one, and everybody who kind of put something into this, including Chris, who helped draft it, and I know Marlene was involved, and several others. And so, just really want to thank them for all their participation.
Thank you. Any commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
I'm sorry, I have my hand up.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Klitschke, go for it. I didn't see you.
It's okay. Councilmember Cathcart pretty much covered it. I appreciate his support and input on this ordinance. I brought this forward because we were seeing a lot of efforts to update fee schedules that were 15-plus years old, sometimes decades old, and then they have to go up quite a bit sometimes, and there's a lot of sticker shock associated with this. And in a city where we've been having problems with our budget, seems, seems common sense to be looking at our fee schedules every couple of years and making sure that they match the costs of services. Sometimes fees will go down, but a lot of times with inflation, they'll go up. But this is to avoid sticker shock and to keep our budget smooth and stable. And I do appreciate all the departments coming to meetings with me and helping us draft this so that we can understand what we need to do to get them on a schedule without disrupting their operations. So that took a bit, and Chris was very helpful in drafting the whole thing, and I appreciate Councilmember Cathcart bringing his input as well.
Any other commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance, C36667, relating to discrimination and affirming protection of LGBTQIA2S+ communities in Spokane, amending sections 18.01.02.0.030 and point zero, excuse me, 18.02.030 of Title 18 of the Spokane Municipal Code, creating a new section 03.07.340 and chapter 03.07 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and establishing an effective date.
I want to say, given the number of people signed up, 67, I am announcing a one-minute limit on each speaker. Is there any objection?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that question's for the council members. Thank you. All right, so we're now limited to one...
Council President? Yeah, I would, I would say, I mean, I think three minutes is the rule, and we should stick with what people had expected.
I would say maybe 90 seconds instead. I know that people prepare, but also people, three minutes can be three hours long, and we might lose people by the end, too. So it's kind of a trade-off to hear everyone while also balancing prepared remarks.
All right. What about two minutes?
Yeah, I would recommend two minutes.
Okay, want to need a motion?
I'll make a motion for two-minute testimony tonight. I'll make a motion for two-minute testimony tonight.
Second.
It's been moved to second for two minutes. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Is that four to three, Ms. Fister?
I got five to two.
Okay. All right, five to... All right, well, with that, we will start with, and it will be two minutes, will be IC, Abby, and then EV.
We have a lot of folks signed up or online tonight, so when council president calls your name, you can hit star 3 or raise your hand to be recognized, starting with IC.
Hello, everybody. I see from District 3. I've lived in the northern Spokane areas for my entire life, and I cannot imagine another place like this city feeling quite like home. I love spending time with my family, appreciating nature, going to work, just being a normal guy. I'm pretty simple. Let's see. And I feel like most of the people in Spokane also just want a simple and fulfilling life. My neighbors throughout my life have minded their business, I've minded mine, and privacy has been a shared value in my communities. I typically don't reveal this fact about myself, and the privacy I've been afforded has allowed me to. But I am a transgender man, and the reason I like to keep that fact to myself is because no matter who learns it, it changes their perception about me. I'm sure right now, by saying that, some no longer view me as the same simple, privacy-centered guy. And I know this because this happens in every room where the trans bomb gets dropped. Whether the ignorance stems from the internet, corporate media, government figures, it always ends up the same. I am lucky to have been seen as a man for the last couple of years because it saves that moment that ranges from awkward and uncomfortable to fully hostile. And I am lucky because now when I interact with people, I am taken at face value, which is all that I want. I ask this council to pass ordinance C36667 so that I can continue to enjoy my simple life with my friends and family. Currently, I live in extreme fear that if the right group were to demand it, my medical history and personal records could be accessed. People with my lived experience have been labeled as public enemy number one, and I want to know that my local government will protect my privacy from, will protect my right to privacy and government overreach on the basis of identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby? Online?
Abby, go ahead. Whenever you're ready, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name's Abby, and I'm urging you to approve ordinance C3667. For over 40 years, I've been proud to call Spokane my home. I grew up here, I went to college here, I raised a family here. And while some are quick to point out its problems or talk about how they can't recognize it anymore, I still love my city. Unfortunately, lately, it seems like the feeling isn't mutual because I'm trans. I've always been trans. I was trans when I was digging out my neighbors during a ice storm. I was trans when I was helping them pick up after the windstorm. But suddenly, it seems to be a real problem for some individuals because left their ignorance turn to hate. And if I thought they represented the majority of the people of Spokane, that might let me sat over my opinion of this city I love. But they aren't the majority, they're just very loud. Passing this ordinance today would make a statement that their ignorance and hate does not define Spokane as a city. Because what we're asking for are not special privileges but protections for the rights and safety that should be guaranteed to all people, but for us are currently being threatened. I'm asking you to rise above table news culture wars and fear-mongering designs to divide us because we're not outsiders or we are new friends. Members of the queer community have always been a part of Spokane. We are coworkers, your classmates, your friends, and the family. And most of all, we're your neighbors, just as we were yesterday and we will be tomorrow. So please pass this ordinance to protect our rights, to protect your neighbors, and to show that while Spokane's not perfect, we're always striving to be better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is EV, online.
Go ahead, EV. You're unmuted.
I am here to urge you to vote yes on ordinance C36667. I moved to Spokane from the Midwest because this was the city that my wife called home, and her home is my home. Unfortunately, because we are both queer and trans, there are folks in this city who do their best to make our lives hard when we do normal, everyday things like go to the grocery store or take a walk. We've experienced everything from gocks to murder eyes to people following us to them yelling out obscenities and slurs. Now, I know these people can't be representative of the majority of Spokaneites, right? I know that most of the people here have to be nice, normal people who want the same things that we want, just to live our lives in peace, day-to-day, getting by well enough to afford our expenses, and maybe have a few comforts, too. And we want to be able to focus on raising our kids to be a good, kind person. But thanks to the current administration, the bigotry we are experiencing is getting more and more brazen, and frankly, more and more scary, to the point where we have to fear for our safety, for our medical care, and for our very lives. Passing an ordinance like this would make such a difference to folks like us because it would show both the queer community and the community at large that our city believes in the safety and rights of all people, and that Spokane is more and better than the reputation of the ones who hate us loudly and proudly. Again, all we want to do is live our lives in peace and truly feel a part of the larger Spokane community. But in order to do that, we need to know that you know we're under attack. And we need to know that you'll do whatever you can to ensure our constitutional right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. This ordinance takes a big step in the right direction. And those of you who truly value words like equity, community, and justice will do the right thing and vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Stein using WebEx.
No, Alex.
No, Alex. Next, we have Rebecca Edwards. And then Kaya Burnett. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rebecca Edwards, and I live in downtown Spokane. I'm here to ask you to vote yes on ordinance C36667 to help ensure that Spokane continues to live up to its motto, that in Spokane, we all belong. Two years ago, my adult transgender son, his wife, and I relocated to Spokane from southern Idaho. We made that decision because we were seeing increasing hostility in everyday life. And my son was even refused life-saving medical care, not gender-affirming care, but basic care for an ongoing, potentially life-threatening condition. More than one doctor actually told him, "I'm not going to help you." When we came to Spokane, we immediately felt a difference. My son found support, not just for his identity, but for his health and safety as a whole person. That kind of dignity and protection is why we chose to make Spokane our home. Because of the welcoming spirit we have experienced here for years through family connections and visits. But with things like ongoing vandalism of inclusive crosswalks, a proposed amended version of this very ordinance that effectively did the exact opposite of its intention, and rising threats from the highest office in our nation, we are feeling the fear and stress we thought we left behind. It's terrifying to know that the hateful federal playbook is being followed at home in this beautiful city that we've come to call home. When I learned about this ordinance, it felt like I could exhale for the first time in 2025 regarding my son's quality of life, safety, and future. But it's not just him or my family that matters. No human being, no American, and no Spokane resident should be in fear because they simply exist. This ordinance that addresses discrimination and affirming protection of LGBTQIA2S+ communities in Spokane is not just about symbolism. It's about real protections, real care, real safety for people who are just trying to live their lives. Passing this ordinance is a powerful first step toward making sure that everyone, every single person, feels truly welcome and safe here. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaya? And after Kaya, there is Erin C.
Hi. Good evening, council. My name is Kaya. I am part of District 1. I wanted to say, you know, really urge you to vote yes on ordinance C36667. I just wanted to make a general statement to those who are tuning in who may be in opposition, that there are those who may disagree with the lifestyles of people in the queer community. However, we are a country that is founded on the agency and freedom and liberty for all, including those whose lifestyles we may not disagree with, even as long as nobody's getting hurt. Right now, it seems as though the queer community is being threatened from all sides, but we are not a threat to anybody. We're friends, lovers, professionals, neighbors, and friends. And increasingly violent and hateful rhetoric pushed by the federal administration emboldens those who wish to harm us simply for being who we are. When it comes to ordinances like this, we have to ask, what do we lose and what do we gain? And Spokane has everything to gain from passing something like this. This expands the Human Rights Code for all, it enhances privacy protections for everybody, and we honor our history, the history of our city by broadening protections for our two-spirit citizens. And there is so much that we have to gain here. A lot of queer people feel like they have to leave for Seattle, but a lot of us don't want to because Spokane is our home. Spokane is my home. LGBTQ folks in Spokane work, our roots and communities are here, and we have dedicated our lives and careers to being stewards of the city. And it would mean the world for Spokane to affirm that commitment and stand by upholding the dignity, privacy, and right to freedom, safety, and happiness of the queer community, the way that the queer community that calls Spokane home upholds the city. So I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you very much for all the hard work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin C. And after Erin, be Emily B.
Hello, I'm here in support of ordinance C36667. When we think about our child's future, we think about the opportunity and potential. It's wild to me that there are adults who think that are well-adjusted, kind, clever, college-bound child receiving medical care that they do not have to provide or need access to themselves as any of their business. Our son is close to graduation. Prior to the executive orders, our only uncertainty for his future was how we were going to afford college. He plans to pursue psychology after graduating next year. His teachers have recommended a school in Idaho as one of the better colleges in his field. He said last night, "It's disheartening to hear all of my peers be excited about college and their future plans after high school. When I think about college, I don't get to think about if that's a right fit for me. I have to think about whether that college, that state, would be safe for people like me, if I will have access to medical care, if I'm allowed to exist." His potential is only limited by the bigotry and cruelty of adults who have no experience with or connection to kids like him. The relentless and coordinated attacks sow fear and misinformation against us, such a small demographic of our community, and exclude them from the same freedoms and opportunities that we all deserve are chilling. There are states and cities now where our son wouldn't be safe, states that are actively advocating for his existence to be a crime, states that have pushed legislation to criminalize parents, teachers, counselors, and doctors that would support a transgender child. If that sentence delighted you, I hope to God that if somebody that you love comes out as trans or gay, that they are surrounded by the community and love that deserves, they deserve, and that protects them. We are so incredibly grateful for Washington and the shield laws and policies that protect trans and queer youth, and we will breathe easier knowing that our city, our community, will join them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dante Jester. And next, Al Oliva.
I'd like to speak in support of the ordinance and very briefly on the incredibly positive, life-changing impact accessing gender-affirming healthcare has had on my life. Almost exactly a year ago, I was fortunate to access gender-affirming healthcare in the form of surgery. It was a surgery I had known I wanted for a long time, over 10 years. But I've lived below the poverty line for the majority of my life, and thus was just last year able to access that care. Immediately after surgery, when I woke up in the recovery room, the first thought I had was, "This feels so right." And it has continued to feel so right every day since then. This shouldn't be a surprising statement, but it turns out not living in constant physical and mental discomfort really improves your well-being. I am a better friend, colleague, partner, employee, and Spokane community member because I was able to access this care. I have found so much more joy in my life and am better able to support others and contribute to my community because I am not constantly distracted and depressed by my own dysphoria. Anyone who has known me over the years can attest to how drastically my life has improved since one year ago. A common phrase we hear and say in the transgender community is "gender-affirming care saves lives." And this is absolutely unequivocally true. And I would like to add, it's not the whole picture, and it's not always that dramatic. And it's not the only reason that gender-affirming care should be accessible and protected. I survived quite a while without gender-affirming care. I was often emotionally distraught, extremely depressed, and very physically uncomfortable, but I survived. And I probably, though not certainly, could have continued to survive if I had to. But I don't want to merely survive. I don't want my Spokane neighbors to merely survive. And I don't think our Spokane council members do either. I think we'd all like to see a Spokane community where everyone is able to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Al, if you come in, then after Al, Emily, my apologies, we'll have you next. Welcome.
Thank you very much, city council. Good evening. My name is Dr. Al Oliva. I'm a board-certified plastic and reconstructive surgeon, serving this community for over 30 years. I'm a member of the Alliance for Hippocratic Medicine Board of Directors, representing 30,000 physicians across the country who uphold their Hippocratic oath to affirm the intrinsic value and dignity of every human person and to do no harm to our patients. We oppose ordinance C3667 because it's just bad medicine, if not frank malpractice. In brief, gender-confused youth truly and greatly suffer. But their suffering can only be relieved by treating the underlying psychological problems. There is overwhelming scientific evidence that pubertal blockers and trans sex hormones do not improve the dysphoria, but actually make it worse. In fact, after years of experimentation with blockers and trans sex hormones, Sweden has now blocked all medical and surgical transitioning of minors. A systematic review of nearly 10,000 published studies from 15 medical databases showed no psychological benefit.
Could you please take a seat? We do not allow standing in the chambers. Thank you. We'll add a little bit more time back to your commentary.
Thank you. There was overwhelming evidence that in over nearly 10,000 published studies from 15 medical databases showed no psychological benefit for medical or surgical transitioning of children and adolescents in Sweden. Finland, Denmark, Norway, countries that have always been welcoming to the LGBTQ community have stopped transitioning children and adolescents based on scientific research. The state of Queensland in Australia, and last week, Brazil, prohibited pubertal blockers. England shut down the Travisstock Clinic, the largest transgender clinic in Europe. They found, quote, "sexless adults, adolescents with depleted bone density, hampered cognitive development, and a worsening of psychological problems," end quote. The largest comprehensive review to date...
Council President, point of order. Point of order. We'll either have respect, or we will suspend, I will suspend...
Don't push that for us!
Please.
Point of order. So I think we're all here to weigh in on this ordinance. The more that this continues, it's going to make it harder to happen, us to discuss it up here and take a vote. A lot of, you know, the standing, the bouncing the chairs, the coughing, all of that elevates the tension in the room. And we're all here because we want to be here. We want a peaceful democracy. When there is views that, you know, we disagree with, I understand the challenging and frustration navigating that. But we want to get through tonight. So in order to do that, just going to ask everyone, please calm down, take a breath. You can step outside in the gallery if you need to, but we want to let people speak without interruption. Thank you.
I'll just finish up here. The largest comprehensive review to date found, quote, "No difference in gender dysphoria, mental health, body image, and psychological functioning in children and adolescents treated with pubertal blockers. Not only is there no benefit, but studies reveal serious medical adverse events, including irreversible sterility." No benefit, tremendous harm. I'm speaking here about children and adolescents. I'm not talking about adults. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next is Emily.
Go ahead, Emily. You're unmuted.
Thank you, sorry about that. All right, my name is Emily, and I live in District 3. I'm here to testify and voice my support for ordinance 36667. I'm a member of the LGBTQIA+ community and a healthcare worker and a leader of the LGBTQIA+ community groups in Spokane. I know firsthand how worried, scared, and vulnerable our queer and trans community members feel right now. Just the other day, a transgender man told me they were considering changing their programs at work and essentially going back to the closet because they feel unsafe being a public member of a queer community. They feel unprotected, unsupported, and unsure about access to the life-saving, gender-affirming care they need. This medical care is scientifically backed and fully supported by the vast majority of the medical community, despite what some may say. While this ordinance would not entirely alleviate worries and concern, it would be a step in the right direction. From this council's messages and campaign promises, I know you all care about the Spokane community and value of safety. This ordinance helps protect these values. I know you all love Spokane, and I urge you all to support this ordinance, protect our community. It is also an important gesture that shows that you will do your best to protect marginalized communities and people in Spokane. I hope this council chooses to do the right thing for trans and cis queer people, and Spokane as well. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have John Alder, Justin Haller, and then Jacqueline Swanson.
I'm John Alder, a bisexual living in northeast Spokane. I'm supporting tonight's ordinance concerning LGBTQ rights. Grown up in the sixties or seventies, being bisexual was considered not to be real, only that you had immoral values, and you had to go straight. Finally, years later, I realized that it was real, but to my surprise, I found a church who was supposed to be the enemy to help me deal with this. Many churches have fueled the immoral thoughts associated with LGBTQ. Pastor Andrew Castro Lang at Westminster convinced many of us that we were all God's children and we deserved nothing but love, respect, and acceptance for who we are. And only do LGBTQ members go to Westminster. They participate as moderators, chairs of the trustee, serving our neighbor committees, as well as we have one that's transgender. It brings brownies and deviled eggs to our social every week. And we are feeling free to participate in any church activity and keep the church going because they are all accepted for who they are with the knowledge of being one of God's children. It is now time for the whole community of Spokane to take this attitude. The council will help by voting yes on this ordinance. Then Spokane, time to accept all of the LGBT community. We're here to stay.
Thank you. Justin Holler, and then Jacqueline Swanson.
Hi, my name's Justin Holler, District One. Interesting that you have three sixes on that number. It's a, I don't know what that's about, if that's a coincidence or not. I'm not a religious guy, but that's just, you know, fun little factoid. I don't know why you guys are adding more special things. There are already laws against discrimination, you know, if, and I don't care what you do in the bedroom, it's not my business. I don't care what your preferences are. I don't care what you do, as long as it's with other consenting adults. But it's surprising that the people who want to be treated the same are the loudest about how different they are. I don't care. It's not my business. Yet everyone has to make it their business. I'm this, I'm this, I'm this, I'm a special this, I'm a special that. I don't get up and say, "I'm a left-handed, red-haired Pisces who has face cut when I was one and a half years old." I don't harp on that. I don't say, "I'm different, I'm different, I'm different." No. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what you are. There's males and there's females, and then there's everything else that's confused. And it's really sad that in the last, what, twenty, thirty years, the teachers have brainwashed the kids into thinking that they have to be special to be them. And there are two people that I'm related to that were brainwashed by a school system, unfortunately, into thinking that they're something they weren't. And they sorted it out and they figured out who they were, but it doesn't matter who they are. It matters that they figure out themselves and not be indoctrinated by schools or laws that duplicate something that's already on the books statewide. You can't go around and yell certain things. You can't go around and do certain things because there's already laws on the books. We don't need to add to that confusion. There's two genders, that's it.
Thank you. Jacqueline. And after Jacqueline, Dallas.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Swanson. I'm actually a resident of Spokane Valley, but I currently work in Spokane and I have for many years. I'm here today to voice my support for Ordinance C 36667 and to thank the council and community members who have worked towards its development. I've relied on different forms of reproductive healthcare throughout my adult life, and having access to that care has given me the freedom to make the right decisions for myself and my future. It has spared me from physical complications, financial strain, and the mental burden that comes with limited or no options. This is what bodily autonomy makes possible, the ability not just to survive, but to thrive. Everyone deserves that same freedom, the right to make personal healthcare decisions without fear, stigma, or interference. While I'm not a part of the LGBTQIA2S+ community myself, I have friends, family, and coworkers and neighbors who are. These people enrich our lives and communities every day, and they deserve to feel safe, respected, and supported. This ordinance will directly impact the well-being of these valued members of our community. I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance and to continue to work to uphold Spokane as a place where we protect one another's dignity, safety, and freedom to live authentically. Thank you.
Thank you. Dallas, and after Dallas, Jay.
Go ahead, Dallas, you're unmuted.
Good evening and thank you, City Council President Wilkerson and City Council members for taking the time to hear my testimony. My name is Dallas Lyle and I live in Cheney, Washington. I am a proud, gay, HIV-positive male that knows the best way to live my life is in the service of others and God. I was born and raised in District One in Spokane, and I was also outed as a gay male in 1992 at Rogers High School. I would like to voice my full support for Ordinance C 36667 and urge you to vote in favor of protecting your fellow human beings that are currently under political and hate-filled attacks. I am deeply saddened that I'm living in a time where the current administration in DC is proposing to defund a suicide and crisis hotline for LGBTQIA youth. If the LGBTQIA community scares you more than Nazis do, you may want to sit with that. As a current board member for the Spokane AIDS Network, I regularly get to witness the kindness and love that runs throughout not only our HIV community, but the Pacific Northwest as well. I urge you to support radical love and protect the ones that need to be surrounded by your protection and our loving support. I am grateful this ordinance will create a shield law in which the city will not provide any resources to assist in any investigation or detention of someone exercising their rights. Discrimination, harassment, and hate are not core values that Spokane represents. What part of "love thy neighbor" is confusing? We can love radically and be the change that is needed in the world at this moment. I want to thank Councilmember Dylan for bringing this ordinance to the table today. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Jay.
Jay, go ahead and hit star three or raise your hand if you're online. All right, go ahead. You are unmuted. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jay. Can't hear you yet.
Jay, we will go on to the next one and come back and try to, as you work out your issues. Shiva Toler, I believe she's online as well.
Shiva, if you're online. Hit star three or raise your hand. Okay. Go ahead, Shiva.
Good evening, sorry, I'm short. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Shiva and I'm a Spokane resident speaking in support and urging you to vote in favor of Ordinance C 36667. As a queer community member, I believe this ordinance is essential for human rights in our city, first adding to spirits who are human rights, who need to finally acknowledge indigenous gender identities that have existed in the country but have been historically marginalized. The updated definitions regarding gender and sex insurance could reflect our community's full diversity. This ordinance provides some protections for those seeking gender-affirming reproductive healthcare and HIV care. These protections, both for real security and at critical times, and federal apps have eliminated over two hundred and seventy grants, still being more than that, one that have been funded by non-Indian health funding for queer individuals of a national, both protections are now more important than ever. I strongly support provisions preventing collection of information about sex assigned at birth and preventing law enforcement from investigating individuals for exercising their healthcare rights. These measures protect privacy and prevent discrimination. The community to provide gender-affirming and reproductive care to the city in place shows Spokane values its workforce and recognizes the importance of comprehensive healthcare for all. These provisions, along with one written by the Office of Civil Rights in collaboration with queer community leadership, suggest remaining an ongoing amendment to follow. This ordinance is about human rights, dignity, and safety, and in finding them may be self-threatening, Spokane has an opportunity to stand firm against all of those requirements. Again, I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tim Stickney in person. And then Anita.
And I've got Jay as a panelist now, so Jay, if you want to try unmuting yourself and seeing if we can hear you. I see that you're unmuted but still can't hear you, so we'll come back to you.
Come on down, Tim. Thank you.
My name is Tim Stickney. I live in District One. In my personal and private capacity, I wish to testify to the need for this ordinance to become law in the city of Spokane. The most basic and meaningful right we have is to our own bodies. Without it, there is no true freedom to speak, to hold creed, or to own property. And yet, as queer people have begun to assert this right, we face backlash from multiple corners of society. If we listen to the knowledge in our bodies, we are told we are broken. If we make this knowledge real, we are told we are perverse. Much of this backlash comes from people who claim to love freedom but are too willing to legislate their beliefs onto our bodies. They claim the benefit of biology without understanding the diversity of humanity, or that their cold and rigid categories simply cannot describe the range of human physical expression. They act from fear when we show them what freedom could truly mean. Even now, the Attorney General of the United States is trying to litigate her own ideology of gender, claiming that some of us are an infestation, a mutilation. If this is true, then our society engages in casual mutilation anytime we shave, dye our hair, remove an appendix, or treat cancer. Queerness is not subtractive. It does not remove anything from us that we need. It is a process of becoming, of changing ourselves to match who we know at our core we are. No one else has the right to determine that for us. While more need to be done is for these reasons and these attacks on our rights that our city needs this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next is Anita. Anita Sather, and then Cassandra Forzman.
Good evening. I appreciate this time that you're allowing us to speak on this matter. Since it's so important, I wanted to make sure I wrote everything down, so give me just a moment. I, my name is Anita Sather and I reside in District Two. I have proudly called Spokane my home since 2005, in Spokane County, for over thirty-five years before that. I was born and raised in this close-knit community. I have raised a wonderful son in this community and dedicated my career to serving others. I currently work within our community, providing legal support to our most marginalized populations, specifically LGBTQ plus individuals, women, survivors of domestic violence, and those experiencing homelessness. I'm writing to express my strong support for Ordinance C 36667, the proposed shield law. This ordinance is a crucial step towards aligning our city's values with those already upheld at the state level. Spokane has long been a reflection of kindness, compassion, and resilience, and I believe this ordinance reinforces our commitment to being a safe, inclusive, and affirming place for all. In these uncertain and divisive times, it is imperative that we stand united in support of our most vulnerable. The city of Spokane has the opportunity to lead by example and set a precedence that other cities can follow. By passing this ordinance, we demonstrate our dedication to individual freedom, bodily autonomy, and equal protection under the law. As a mother, I have raised my transgender son-
And Anita, thank you, your time is-
Oh, darn it.
Cassandra? And then Jason S.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to the council. My name is Cassandra Forzman, a Spokane resident of District Two, a retired Marine and the Vice President of Spokane Pride. With the litany of oppressive actions being taken by the current administration, as well as red states across the country, cities like Spokane showing support and solidarity with its 2SLG LGBTQIA+ citizens, as well as immigrants, the disabled, the unhoused, and veterans that are Spokaneites is important. Why is codifying that support, as well as acknowledging that these communities are being oppressed by the federal government, such a big deal to them? Because it enables people like me to get medical insurance that covers things like gender-affirming care, which the Veterans Administration no longer will provide. For me to get access to that, I now need to purchase an additional health insurance policy, even though I already have Medicare, TriCare Prime, and what used to be 100% coverage from the VA. Citizens like, or cities like Spokane that codify access to these things shows these vulnerable members of the community that they have not been forgotten, that they are important, valued citizens. Fortunately, the overwhelming majority of the city council voted against the poison pill amendments that were proposed to this by councilperson Bingle. There is a long list of reasons why those proposed amendments would be bad for Spokane, some of which are it would cost the city countless amounts of money in legal fees as those amendments were in violation of state law. They're based on studies that have been proven to be inaccurate. They're full of misinformation and outright false claims about transgender people, to name a few. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jason S. And then after Jason, Jonathan Myersberg.
Hi, my name is Jason S. I'm a resident of Spokane. Just real quick, I'm here to voice my support for Ordinance C 3667 because I believe the LGBTQIA two-spirit members of our community really need our support at the moment. I'd like to thank the council for putting this on the agenda, and I've never spoken before the council before, and I appreciate that we have this forum where we can voice our concerns, but of course, it doesn't work if we have people in our community who feel unsafe. And it doesn't work if there are people like me who don't exercise their privilege and use it. I've always been a passive supporter. I've never shown up. I've never stood up, but it's time to show my support for the vulnerable members of this community. I don't even know what district I am in. Probably voted for one of you. You're welcome. Obviously, I'm not very civically minded, but I'm not here because I think I can change anyone's mind. I'm not here because I think I can add anything to the conversation. I'm only really speaking for the people who felt like they couldn't come here. And I'd just like to say to the members of the LGBTQIA two-spirit community that you have more friends than you know, and to those friends that they don't know they had, it is really time for you to stand up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. You are a member of, citizen of Spokane. That's really all that matters to me. Next is Jonathan, and after Jonathan, we have Gretchen McDevitt.
Hello, Jonathan Myersberg. I've lived in every corner of this city. I support Ordinance C 36667. If passed, this can make several small changes that enable bigger changes that this community desperately needs. These protections are crucial. As you've heard tonight, as you'll hear again, some people in Spokane don't want trans or queer people to exist. Those in opposition explicitly say, "I don't want you to exist." In the wake of the presidency, most of my trans friends and family have considered fleeing to Seattle or from the US altogether. A Spokane without the 2SLGBTQIA community is a weaker Spokane. We are everywhere. We work, we serve, and we take care of this city, just like you. To those afraid of children making a mistake, this is not a choice anyone takes lightly. It's an uphill battle, and people who think you shouldn't exist- It's an uphill battle, and people who think you shouldn't exist are there along the way. As a kid, I thought about transitioning. I didn't. Others in my class thought about it and did. Don't take that choice away from other people. Only 1% of people regret gender-affirming surgery. Why take away a choice that would improve the lives of nearly 100% of people who seek it? I've met countless trans people overjoyed after gender-affirming care. Everyone deserves comfort in their own bodies. To those concerned about women's safety, so are we. We are concerned for the safety of all women. We want the same problems resolved. Us existing threatens no one. Mr. Bingle. And to those who may vote against this ordinance, you will certainly lose my vote and others, but I want to remind you of your ability to change. I want to remind everybody in opposition of their ability to change. I want to remind everyone else, this is just a first step.
Thank you, Jonathan. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Gretchen McDevitt. And after Gretchen will be Stephanie McGee.
Gretchen McDevitt, Spokane. In addition to what I said last week, I have one other concern about the transgender ordinance. I do not agree with the "whereas" statement that accuses the president's executive orders as failing to, quote, "provide equal access to transgender people to sports." I assume this statement is based on the fact that the president does not support transgender females participating in female sports. But according to Pew Research this year, 66% of Americans agree, while only 15% disagree. The other 19% express no opinion. Transgender athletes have equal access. They just have to compete in the sports based on their biological sex. Caitlyn Jenner, formerly Bruce Jenner, who won the gold medal in the 1976 Olympic decathlon, is one who agrees with the 66%. She said that biological males should not be allowed to compete in female sports in order to, quote, "protect the integrity of competition." She further said that trans women are competing against women, taking valuable opportunities for the long-protected class under Title IX, and causing physical harm, and that's only in some cases. So far, the most surreal example illustrating how unfair it is to biological females occurred recently in the United Kingdom, when two transgender females competed in the final round of a women's pool championship. One of the transgender females has won the competition three out of the last four times. As a result of this last championship match, the UK Supreme Court ruled that the legal definition of a woman is based on biological sex, so no longer will transgender women be able to compete in the women's category in this ultimate pool group. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie McGee. And then Cynthia Zappacotti. I'm trying to get it right, Cynthia. I'm going to work on it.
Go ahead, Stephanie. You're unmuted.
Hello, my name is Stephanie, and I'm here to support my--to voice my support for Ordinance C-36667. Trans people have always existed and always will exist. They are our neighbors, family, friends, and coworkers. They deserve to not just survive, but to thrive. Unfortunately, anti-trans propaganda makes even survival a difficult battle. It is our duty to make survival easier. The only way to do that is to write their protections into law. I want trans kids to have the opportunity to become trans adults. Protecting gender-affirming care is essential in that endeavor. As a cis woman, I am appalled at the treatment of trans women in the name of my protection. Hate doesn't protect anyone. Securing the right for gender self-determination does. Please, 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 vote yes. Vote yes to save lives. Vote yes for those lives to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Zappacotti, and then Anne Martin.
I'm Cindy Zappacotti, a resident of Spokane. I've never been a fan of government segregation. Growing up in the remote logging town of Shelton, Washington, in the 1950s and '60s, the population was mostly poor, with fewer middle class. Most residents worked in the logging industry. There was not much government welfare then, so most had to depend on each other and charity to survive. Color and ethnicity by then was not a big deal. Workers were workers and were valued equally at that level of society. Thankfully, government-endorsed racism changed in the '70s. Now we fast-forward to 2025, and a new form of segregation of citizens has now reared its ugly head in Spokane. Government-favored class distinction is now going to be based on sexual practices, with your yes vote on C-36667. Disguised as an antidiscrimination law, it will establish a city government labeling of people according to their sexual practices, which most of us want to keep private. I believe this unconstitutional segregation by a government body is wrong and a throwback to the racial discrimination of governments in the U.S. in the past. I am concerned at the open-ended definition of this so-called favored class with the "plus" at the end. What does that mean? Will you continue to define what sexual practices are favored in Spokane, including those currently illegal in our state? Bestiality, or sex with animals? Incest with close family members? Adult sex with minor children? This remains to be seen, and I am concerned. Vote no on this ill-conceived ordinance.
Thank you. Anne Martin, and then Will Huelings.
Council President and Council Members, my name is Anne Martin. I'm the Director of Greater Spokane Progress. I'm speaking on behalf of the GSP Board of Directors to urge you to support Ordinance C-36667. GSP is a grassroots network of nearly 40 organizations. We are working together to advance our collective vision to create equity in our community. We are in strong support of this ordinance, as it is an important step towards creating an equitable city where all of us belong, and ensuring that 2SLGBTQIA+ people feel safe and supported. The updates to the Title 18 Human Rights Code are important and long overdue. By adding Two-Spirit to the Human Rights Code, Spokane is showing that we value and respect the people whose land we occupy. It is a bare minimum towards respecting and valuing Two-Spirit people who existed before colonization and are still here. Our city and community needs to take action and stand up against Trump administration's persecution of 2SLGBTQIA+ people. This ordinance provides key protections and takes an important stance by prohibiting the use of city resources to investigate individuals exercising their right to reproductive and gender-affirming care. Hate is present throughout our city, throughout our region, and it is here in Spokane. We must do all that we can to protect 2SLGBTQIA+ community members, and city-level protections are needed for their physical safety. The commitment being made with this ordinance is critical in order to ensure the well-being and safety of attendees at events. We are very glad that the ordinance includes a role for the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion and the Human Rights Commission to hold the city of Spokane accountable, to ensure that our city's policies and practices are inclusive, equitable, and affirming for 2SLGBTQIA+ individuals in our community. Accountability is a key role for the OCRI. It's important for the city to continue to invest in and grow the capacity of this office so it can fulfill its role. We urge you to vote yes on Ordinance C-36667, so we can put these protections into law. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Huelings, and after Will, Emily Fletcher.
My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. So I am against this ordinance. Let's be clear, this ordinance isn't about protection. It's about hatred for President Donald J. Trump. It's about pandering to woke mobs, the same people laughing in the background. Yeah. And it's about dividing our community even further while Spokane falls apart around us. In America, we are all created equal. Nobody is more special, especially someone that all they care about is who they sleep with or their gender. I don't care. Okay? And a lot of people, a lot of Americans, do not care, except certain special people. Okay? So we already have strong laws protecting every American citizen from discrimination. We don't need more laws to create special classes of people based on identity politics or left-wing fantasy. But now, the Democrats sitting up here, and you know who you are, are so blinded by this hatred of Trump and their obsession with the--I'm not even going to say it--the LGBTQ cult and transgender ideology that they can't even see the destruction that it's causing. I mean, just look at the news. You've got transgender men, men my size, competing against females in female sports. Would you--what would you think if Will said he's a female competing in sports? You'd probably laugh. But to appease this tiny, loud minority who already have the same rights as everyone else under our Constitution. Meanwhile, the real Spokane you're supposed to be serving is drowning in fentanyl overdoses, violent crime, homelessness--
Thank you, Will. Emily Fletcher, and then Robin Hayes.
Emily, if you're online, you can hit star three. There you are. Go ahead, you're unmuted.
Hello?
Go ahead, Emily.
My name is Emily Fletcher, and I've been part of the Spokane community for the past four years. I've been thinking about--a lot about what makes community feel like home. And for me, it's knowing that I belong here, and that my neighbors and I look out for each other, that we all have a place at the table, and that's really what this ordinance is about. When I look at what this ordinance does, I see a Spokane that says everyone belongs here. I see a city that honors Two-Spirit identities that have been part of indigenous communities since long before any of us were here. I see a commitment that says health care, whether it's gender-affirming care, or reproductive health, or HIV treatment, should be accessible without fear. I worry about the people in our community who, right now, are afraid to seek the care they need. I think about how it would feel to be scared of getting in trouble for seeking health care, and no one should have to live with that fear, especially not here in Spokane. What moves me about this ordinance is that it's not just words. It creates real protections and makes sure the members of our queer communities can get the health care they need without fear, and it ensures our city listens and proves that they care. It makes Spokane a place where human rights aren't just something we talk about. It makes us a community that protects each other, even if the federal government doesn't. I believe years from now, we'll look back at this moment as one where Spokane made a choice about who we want to be as a community, and I hope this choice will be one of compassion, respect, and belonging. Please vote in favor of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Hayes, and then Sunshine Wigan. No, Robin?
Robin, go ahead if you're there. Is that you?
I'll see. Sunshine?
No. And Jay, if you rejoined and want to try again, you can hit star three or raise your hand, and I'll come back to you.
Sunshine, born in Spokane. I think that it's important, like I said, I'll believe in segregation, and I kind of feel like, you know, we all should just be equal. But the thing--like, I'm going to bring this up again. It really bugs me in the shelters that we have men coming in there that are women, and there's a lot of us that are domestic violence. But there was a case, a long time ago, why we put them in the shelters with us. The kid was almost killed because he was trans, and he was staying in the house of charity, and they videotaped it and everything, put it on the internet, and they all went to jail for it. And so I think it's very important to put these amendments and these stipulations in place, and just support our community and all of our communities as much as we can. I don't really take--I don't know, with my daughter, she's married to a woman, and so I would want her to be protected, and the people that I love. And I don't think that anybody should ever be hurt for whatever they want to believe in or be. And I think as long as it's age-appropriate, when they get the transgender stuff, I mean, let them do what they want to do, as long as, you know, they're adults. But, you know, just--this kind of hits because of my daughter, I guess. And I just remember seeing that guy almost die and how sad it made me. And so I am thankful that he is able to go into women's shelters and be safe now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mick Barnes on WebEx.
Mick, if you're on WebEx, you can hit star three or raise your hand.
If you don't see Mick, next is Sarah Cooper, who is online.
Sarah, if you're online, you can hit star three or raise your hand.
I am newly part of the Three, so I'm pretty excited to move to the North Central. I have many 2SLGBTQTIA friends and family members, and I'm thankful for this ordinance. I urge the City Council to pass this and help ensure that marginalized members of my community have basic human rights and dignity. My trans friends and family make our community a better place to live. Their vibrance and willingness to live their truth, even when it's hard, are things to be embraced and celebrated, and have taught me how to be a better human. My life is infinitely better because of my community members, and I'm coming before you to ask you to support them. Ordinances like this make a real positive difference in the lives of 2SLGBTQTIA+ individuals. Trevor Project did a study in 2023 and found that in states that passed anti-transgender laws, suicide attempts by transgender teens increased by 72% relative to states that didn't pass these laws. This isn't because the inherent mental health is different in people living in those states. It's because of the lack of support, mistreatment, and stigmatization that these vulnerable kiddos face at the hands of others, including discriminatory laws. We can do better than that, and we have done better than that, and I'm thankful for it. I'm asking us to keep doing better. Spokane is an amazing community, and I'm thankful to be here and part of the trans community. We need to show up and give city-level protections for the exceptional individuals and families who live here. Please vote in support of Ordinance C-36667 and keep Spokane better.
Thank you. Next is Taylor Dickerson on WebEx.
All right, go ahead, Taylor.
Hi, my name is Taylor Dickerson, and I'm a graduate student with the MSW program at Eastern Washington University. I am also a proud member of the LGBTQIA+ community. I am proud to live in Spokane, a city that values freedom, community, and dignity for all. Ordinance C-3667 builds on those values by modernizing our human rights codes, protecting LGBTQIA+ people, and safeguarding access to reproductive and HIV care. I'm here tonight because both my education and my lived experience tell me the same truth: access to affirming health care saves lives. Whether you realize it or not, you or someone you know will be impacted by this ordinance. My friends, coworkers, classmates, and clients all rely on access to reproductive and gender-affirming care. This ordinance protects their right and everyone's right to live safely, authentically, and access essential health care without fear. This ordinance also strengthens our shield against future political shifts. It ensures city resources will not be weaponized against people seeking reproductive HIV or gender-affirming care. It recognizes and respects Two-Spirit, queer, and trans community members who have always been part of Spokane's fabric. Passing Ordinance C-3667 sends a clear message: Spokane chooses humanity over hate. We choose to protect our neighbors. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Colton Gerard online.
It was supposed to be changed to here.
Oh, okay. All right, you're first. Come on down.
Hi there. My name is Colton Gerard, and I have been a resident of Spokane for almost 40 years. I love this city, and I hope to call it home for many more. If it weren't for the rainbow on my chest, you would likely assume that I was just another straight, cisgender, white man in America. What this rainbow doesn't tell you-- What this rainbow doesn't tell you is that while I am a gay man, I am a gay man who was assigned female at birth. By three years old, I would become hysterical if I had to so much as wear a dress, and for 30 years, I suffered the many consequences that come with self-hatred. Today, I stand in front of you, seven years sober, in the best health of my life, surrounded by a community that loves me, and working toward becoming a commercial electrician. The basis of my success is simple: gender-affirming care in a city that, for the most part, has made me feel safe throughout my whole life. It also made me feel, or, excuse me, it also has made me a more productive and beneficial part of this community while saving my life. I stand here today to represent all that the Queer Agenda stands for: the ability for queer children to grow into happy, healthy queer adults. More so than ever, I am proud to call Spokane home. But as a trans person in America, under a Trump administration, I am terrified. I'm terrified of losing my healthcare, I'm terrified of losing basic rights, I'm terrified of my ability to continue to call this country my home. So I ask of you, please, today, to vote yes to keeping Spokane safe and inclusive for all, to vote and say that we all truly do belong, and to vote like you want to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dana Jones.
Dana, if you're online, you can hit star three or raise your hand.
Next is Christian Alcott, online as well.
Kristen, if you're online.
Christian.
Christian, thank you. Go ahead, Christian.
Just one moment, they're coming up. Sorry. All right. Good evening. I just want to put it out on the record that I'm not now, or have ever been confused. Now that I've got your attention, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening on a matter that is true to my core, and that is of the utmost importance to our community and to the city of Spokane. My name is Christian Alcott, resident of Spokane, from District 2. I'm a 52-year-old transplant to this beautiful city from the East Coast. This is actually my second time living out here. That's how much I loved it the first time. That's when I was living as an out lesbian. I know that I stand before you now as a trans man, and I transitioned at the age of 46. I've always known that I was different. I just wish that I had half, I was half as bold and brave as the youth that I see on a daily basis here in Spokane. I'm an Army veteran. I wasn't planning on going into the Army, yet I was the kid that got shunned and discriminated against in high school, and lost my scholarship to college as my homophobic English teacher failed me for my final paper. My paper was homosexuality in mass media. The paper kept me from graduating with my class and finishing my senior year of softball. My classmates had no idea what had happened. My mother was beyond ashamed and kept asking me why, what had I done, what was I thinking? I've spent nearly 30 years working in the mental health field, working with adults, and more importantly, to address today's agenda, working with queer youth.
And thank you, Christian, your time is up. Next is Aiden Trow, and after Aiden, Robin Wood. Is Aiden online?
Aiden, if you're online, you can raise your hand.
Is Robin Wood?
Robin Wood. If you're online, you can hit star three. There you go.
Sorry, give us just one moment, she's still walking up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Robin Wood. I'm from District 2. Good evening, members of the City Council and value residents of Spokane. I stand before you today as Spokane resident of 54 years, a mother, and a grandmother, and an advocate for the LGBTQ community. This ordinance isn't just about this group, it's about building a more inclusive, equitable, and safe community. I have been fighting for change for this city since 1990. In 1992, I walked by First Pride March, and many after that, where the anxiety and fear was so thick you could cut it with a knife, where all of us watched the rooftops for snipers along the parade route. It took real courage in those days to support the community publicly. Here I am, 33 years later, facing an even bigger threat to our nation: losing its democracy and becoming a crystal fascist nation that if they could, they would annihilate us all. Imagine living in a city where you continually worry about being discriminated against, where your identity is a source of fear rather than pride. We need to take every step possible to reduce transgender people from being outed without their consent. The reality of these, this is a reality of individuals in our region, and I am so pleased to see the adding of Two-Spirit people to the Human Rights Code. Spokane is showing we value and respect the people whose land we occupy, at a time when our federal government is hell-bent on destroying any kind of support.
And thank you, Robin, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next, Weston Yarborough, and then Jeff DeBrey.
Weston, if you're online, you can hit star three or raise your hand. No, Weston.
Jeff DeBrey?
Jeff?
Dr. Gwyneth Manser?
Just one moment. Jeff DeBrey? Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hello. My name is Jeff DeBrey, and I serve as the Eastern Washington Director for Fuse Washington, the state's largest progressive advocacy organization, representing 39,000 members in our state and 6,000 people right here in Spokane. I am testifying today in strong support of ordinance C-3667 to protect and defend LGBTQ neighbors in our community. I'm calling in today from Nine Bar &amp; Bistro, where I'm joined by dozens of queer community members and allies who believe in a Spokane where we all belong. I want to encourage members of our City Council to consider what this ordinance is really about, and that is people: real people in Spokane who you know, who you love, and who have elected you to represent them. So let me remind you what this ordinance does to protect people. This ordinance adds and defines LGBTQ communities and gender-affirming care to Spokane's Title 18 Code. We know queer people, especially trans people, at a greater risk to experience homelessness and suicide, and the laws we pass and the messages we send matter. In states that have passed anti-transgender laws, suicide attempts by transgender teens have increased by 72%. Just this past year, nearly half of LGBTQ youth have struggled with mental health challenges, and LGBTQ youth are 120% more likely to experience homelessness. All this is unacceptable, and also something we must change. This ordinance also commits the city to organizing with LGBTQ leaders to preserve safety and prioritize the well-being and safety of all attendees at Pride. We know dozens of members of a white nationalist hate group were arrested outside of CDA in 2022, including members from Washington. This hate is here in Spokane, and we must fight against it. Finally, I speak to you today not only on behalf of Fuse, but as a member of the queer community myself. I came out in Spokane in 2022, and my life has been better for it ever since, but it's not always been this way. I lost community, close friends, and support, and when I came out, and I know that that experience of loss is shared by many other queer people you've heard from today.
And thank you, Jeff, your time is up.
But I'm gaining, it's so much better.
Thank you, Jeff. Next is Dr. Gwyneth Manser. Online?
Dr. Manser, if you're online, you can hit star three.
We'll go to Sky Cooper, and then Joshua Awesome.
Hello, my name is Sky Cooper, and I am urging you to approve this ordinance. I am 13, use different pronouns, and identify as a demi-girl, therefore I'm under the transgender umbrella. I moved to Spokane in November of 2022. I came out and changed my pronoun to Sky after I felt safe here, and it's now legal to that. I would like to remind you that transgender people are just as much of human beings as anyone else for girls of age, gender identity, orientation, or anything else. Please vote in favor of ordinance C-3667 and give transgender people a sense of safety so they do not have to fear losing their rights as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Awesome, and after Joshua Awesome will be Justin.
I'm a local poet, and I wrote a poem on, just felt fitting for this evening. It's an acrostic, which means the first letter of every line makes the title, and the title is Gender is Overrated. Given to us before we can speak, a label we never chose. Every movie, magazine, and song drips roles we were told to play. Never did I question these rules until I did. Don't try to fit me into those rigid lines today. Each parent quietly hopes their child will stay inside the frame. Run free, little ones. I dream of a world where the binaries fade into dust. Safe for all who exist just as they are: no masks, no fear. Once, I shamed my father for picking pink gloves for me, I was not even four. Vibrant colors felt like a trap, a spotlight I was too afraid to enter. Each shade held the power to reveal something I wasn't ready to face. Reasons stacked like walls, keeping my truth locked inside. All colors hold beauty, joy bursting in every hue. Telling children they must fit in a box only dims their light. Elevating rules over identity, we teach them to shrink, not to shine. Desires pushed into shadows, waiting to be set free. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, online?
Go ahead, Justin.
My name is Justin, and I live in District 2. I arrived in Spokane in 2002 to attend Whitworth University. I moved back here to start my business and raise my family. No community is perfect, but my family and I call Spokane home. Every person deserves to feel safe. Everyone deserves to have a home. It breaks my heart that right now, across our country and in this community, many transgender and other queer folks don't feel safe, don't feel welcome where they live. It breaks my heart that transgender youth have to choose between showing up in the world for who they are, and risking the possibility of being targeted simply for existing. This is a moment of moral clarity, a time when we all must ask our future selves if we will be proud of how we acted in this moment. Trans people did not ask for this, they simply want to exist for who they are, free from violence, threats, and harassment. Everyone deserves the right to self-determination, healthcare, and safety. We can choose to protect our trans friends and family. I believe Spokane is willing to stand up for our trans neighbors. Choosing to stand with the vulnerable is never easy, but it is worth it. When we protect the rights of the most vulnerable, we strengthen our communities. When we seek to include and understand the experiences of gender and sexual minorities, we find family. Let's do our part to make every trans kid in the city feel safe to be who they are. Let's support queer families and show them they are welcome here. When we choose to support the vulnerable among us, we find more freedom and acceptance for all of us. That is a city I want to call home. I want to ask the Council to vote yes on ordinance C-3667. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Theo Ritchie, and then Liz Moore.
Theo, go ahead and raise your hand if you're online, or press star three.
Liz Moore?
Go ahead when you're ready, Liz.
I'm Liz Moore. I'm the, I have the honor of being the Executive Director of the Peace and Justice Action League of Spokane, speaking in support of this ordinance and in appreciation of all the leadership and work that has gone into it. Protecting gender-affirming care and the privacy of medical information, and ensuring collaboration with local LGBTQIA+ 2S+ community and cultural leaders are simple and easy to support in the name of freedom. LGBTQIA+ 2S+ people have offered leadership and modeling for freedom and liberation on the personal, social, cultural, and political levels, from Two-Spirit people to the Daughters of Belit and the Mattachine Society, to Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera, to the everyday people across this planet, and the beloved elders, amazing middle agers, and precious, brilliant youth across the inland northwest and in every district of this city. As a queer cis white woman with deep respect for trans leadership, for liberation, and in my role in our PGOS community alongside LGBTQIA+ 2S+ people and allies, I urge you all to vote yes for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Zee. And after Zee, we will have Dream.
Good evening, Council, Council President. My name is Zee, and I moved to Spokane in 2005. I've worked here since 2006, almost two decades of my life spent in service to this beautiful city of Spokane. I stand before you as an individual and a member of a larger community, requesting your support. When I first learned about ordinance C-3667, I questioned it. The Human Rights Code already says Spokane is committed to promoting justice and inclusion, and should be free from discrimination against many factors, including military status, religion, race, gender identity, sexual orientation, nationality, and more. At first glance, I thought this ordinance was redundant. But the truth is, the community named here is facing a renewed and highly targeted attack across this nation. New legislation is constantly brought forth at state levels and executive orders at the federal level, which imply that we don't deserve the same protections, the same access to care, the same opportunities as other citizens. These actions intentionally paint a small group of people with broad brushstrokes in an attempt to smear us and cover us up. They imply a harmful intent where none exists. It's hard for my voice to be heard at the federal level, but I can show up here tonight for my community. Against a sea of legislative fear-mongering and discrimination, this ordinance is a welcome beacon of light. Furthermore, this ordinance supports the existing Human Rights Code. It proves the city is willing to commit to upholding justice and inclusion when threats appear. I hope the city continues to take this stance whenever any communities need support. I ask that you affirm this community is welcome in Spokane. I ask that you do your best to enshrine access to this lifesaving healthcare, healthcare which has allowed me to be a healthy, productive, and happy member of this community. I want to continue being a happy and supported part of this city. Again, I ask that you vote in favor of this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dream, and after Dream is KJ.
I'd like to thank Council members Dylan Navarette and Zappone for bringing this resolution. In a time when trans folks have become one of the biggest scapegoats and boogeyman used by those seeking power over others to justify policies that encroach on the freedoms of all people, it is sorely needed, and I appreciate it. But I was reading through the resolution in the packet and noticed that directly following it is what can only be described as a screed of transphobic bullshit and misinformation cloaked in a language of medicine? What the fuck? If you live in Spokane, trans people are in your life.
I will not, Dream, I will not tolerate profanity.
No more.
Thank you.
If you live in Spokane, trans people are in your life. We're playing music for you, we're serving you drinks, we're making and delivering your food, we're sorting your Amazon packages, we're reporting on important local issues, we're taking care of your aging parents and disabled children. We are human beings with our own struggles, who are doing our best and just trying to live our lives. There are few, if any, documented examples of people weaponizing fake trans identity as a pretense to assault people in bathrooms, and regardless if someone is allowed to be in a bathroom, it's still illegal to assault people. In contrast, there are copious documented cases of trans people ourselves being harassed We're playing music for you, we're serving you drinks, we're making and delivering your food, we're sorting your Amazon packages, we're reporting on important local issues, we're taking care of your aging parents and disabled children. Human, we are human beings with our own struggles, who are doing our best and just trying to live our lives. There are few, if any, documented examples of people weaponizing fake trans identity as a pretense to assault people in bathrooms. And regardless if someone is allowed to be in a bathroom, it's still illegal to assault people. In contrast, there are copious documented cases of trans people ourselves being harassed and assaulted in bathrooms, to the point where some trans folks who will avoid using bathrooms in public places at all. The absurdity of this is worth highlighting. Bingle's proposed amendment and others, other policies like it around our city, the country, and the world would have trans men who present look and sound and gesture as men in women's bathrooms. Give me a few more years on estrogen, more time to learn makeup and vocal training, and more folks will be gendering me female than male, despite being me being neither of those things. And you still want me in the men's room? These policies get posed as an attack on trans people, but really, they're an attack on everyone. Institutions are weaponizing policy in an attempt to tell us as people who we are. In doing so, they take away from all our abilities to figure out and choose who we want to be for ourselves. This goes beyond gender. This is about everyone having authority over our own lives and being able to move away from who we're told we should be into who we actually are. So once again, thank you, council, for affirming our place in the city, and I look forward to working with you in the future to support queer and trans folks in Spokane. And Councilmember Bingle and others opposing this resolution, stop being such weirdos. And I don't mean the cool kind, and let people live our lives.
Thank you, Dream. Welcome.
Hi, my name's KJ. Thanks. Please vote yes on ordinance C-36667. We are watching this country shift fast and dangerously. It's only been three months since the inauguration and already 800, over 850 anti-2S LGBTQIA+ bills have been filed in 2025 alone. Gender-affirming care, bodily autonomy, HIV care, and even our basic human rights are not just under debate, they are under attack, stripped away through executive orders, erased with a stroke of a pen. And businesses fearing retaliation are preemptively complying, leaving many of our community without the lifesaving services they depend on. I'm not optimistic that we'll be protected at the state level, I wish I could be, but leadership has been relatively quiet while our communities are being targeted, threateneded, threatened and demonized. And silence here will only embolden these attacks, allowing them to grow stronger and find new cracks to exploit, and often escalate into more violent and devastating harm. That's why this ordinance matters so deeply. It says, "Not here, not in Spokane." It says, "We will protect our people when others will not." It says, "We will not be silent." I've seen firsthand what happens when protections are absent, trans people forcibly outed, queer families forced to fight for basic healthcare, communities made to choose between living authentically and living safely. We deserve so much better than that, and this ordinance is not just a step towards that better future, it is a step towards living out Spokane's own vision. Much like the powerful work that has, that was done amending the Hate Crime Bill, this moment is more, is more, is about more than changing words on paper. It's about affirming who we are. It's about standing up and declaring that 2S LGBTQIA+ people are not expendable, that our lives are not bargaining chips, that Spokane will not be a city that turns its back when it matters most. It's about building a Spokane where finally we all belong. Please pass this, please be bold, please take a stand.
Thank you. Next is Evie Polansky. And after Evie will be Jacob Schwartz, online.
Hi, my name is Evie Polansky and I'm an Indigenous, gender non-confirming queer member of our Spokane community. I'm here today in support of this ordinance. As we see more and more direct federal attacks on our trans, Two-Spirit, non-binary, and our other, the rest of our LGBTQ communities, we're seeing how these national policies have a real impact locally as well. They create stress, anxiety, and fear for our community. As you've probably noticed today, just the sheer amount of people that are doing this, their testimonies virtually, because of the fear that it causes many as well. Our trans, Two-Spirit, non-binary, and queer communities are full of beautiful and strong people, and we all deserve the same support that's offered to our cis and straight community members. We're not asking for special treatment like some people here are claiming. We're just simply asking to be able to access the same types of care that the rest of you do. Sorry, I got lost. While we don't know how our state government will react to potential future threats from the current federal administration, it is important that our local city government prepares and puts protections in place, like this ordinance, that provides safety and freedom for all of our community members, in particular, our LGBTQ community members that are currently under attack. This ordinance is crucial for our queer youth as well, and it provides protections for queer families who may want to seek refuge in Spokane from anti-queer laws in other states. And it reaffirms for many of us that are already here, that have also moved to Spokane in search of refuge, that Spokane is a safe place to be. So I urge all of you here to vote yes on this ordinance, and remember that the city of Spokane's official motto is "In Spokane, we all belong."
Thank you, Evie, your time is up. Next is Jacob Schwartz, online, and after Jacob will be Haley Olson, online as well.
Go ahead, Jacob.
Hi, my name is Jacob Schwartz. I live in Spokane in District 1. I grew up here, I work here, I worship here as a proud gay Christian. I volunteer here, and I'm part of the community here. I'm testifying in support of city ordinance C-36667. As you've heard tonight, transgender teenage suicide rates increased by at least 72% in states where anti-transgender legislation is passed. We've seen an increase of anti-transgender laws, transgender laws across the United States, which is why Spokane needs this ordinance. I want to see these kids grow into adults. I hope everyone here does. Passing this ordinance is another step in keeping our youth safe. My life has been greatly impacted by amazing queer and trans people, from Alan Turing, a gay man without whom we wouldn't have modern computing, computers, cell phones, just about our daily lives, who was persecuted by the state and ultimately leading to a suicide, to Wendy Carlos, a transgender woman, one of the key creators in Moog Synthetizer, which is a foundation of decades of modern music, to my close friends living their authentic lives as trans and queer people who live and work with us every day. Two-spirit, trans, and queer people have always been here, and we will always be here. When I was a child, I knew I was gay. From the time I was 10, I had to hide the core of my identity from others and from myself. Without the support of people in my life, 2S LGBTQIA+ and allies, I can firmly say that I wouldn't be alive today. Like many gay, queer, and gender-queer people, I had my own thoughts of suicide, denying that I am and all of myself, including my sexuality, made in the image of the divine, would have caused me to end my life. So thank you, city council members, for your effort to support our community. My younger self needed you, our youth need you now, and we are here to stay.
Thank you. Haley Olson, and then Courtney Anderson.
Haley, if you're online, you can raise your hand or press star 3. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Good evening, city council. My name is Haley Olson and I've lived here in Spokane for the majority of my life. I currently live in District 1. I went to public school here, I go to church here, and I found welcome here as part of the local LGBTQIA2S+ community as a bisexual woman. I was also diagnosed with a rare autoimmune disease here. Not long after I graduated from high school, I became seriously ill and soon was forced to apply for disability. From that point, I was told that if I was ever to become pregnant, my constant and ongoing treatment would be, likely be a death sentence for myself and any potential child. But I was told that I was too young to receive a hysterectomy because even though a pregnancy would kill me because of some possible unknown future where I might want to have kids. I am nearly 40 and continue undergoing treatment. Now imagine if a cisgendered woman like me has this much trouble with reproductive healthcare, how hard it must be for people who are trans. Reproductive care includes gender-affirming care. That is why I'm urging the city council to support the, this, um, this ordinance so that, because our founding fathers fought for a revolution for liberty and unity to create this United States. There is no liberty or unity without trans fights.
Thank you. Next is Courtney Anderson.
Courtney, if you're online, you can raise your hand.
If not, Court-
Yeah, we got Courtney.
Hello?
Go ahead, Courtney.
Right, okay. Hello, I am here in support of the ordinance C-36667. Um, I'd like to start by saying that Elon Musk has received gender-affirming care. If you've seen the two pictures of him side by side, one with a receding hairline, and the other in which he clearly had jaw reconstruction and hairline surgery, that is considered gender-affirming care. Gender-affirming care also includes IVF and other assistance that people with wombs use to get pregnant. As a female presenting and sounding person, to be here today, I have to take gender-affirming care every day. I was born with cancer, and the treatment that resulted in my survival also jeopardized the parts of my body that make it work properly, including the organ that controls my hormones. I take medication every day for that organ to work properly. That is considered gender-affirming care. I also have to take estrogen every day, as estrogen protects against brittle bones and osteoporosis. Additionally, if we've been properly educated about the reproduction cycle of people with a uterus, estrogen builds up a lining in the womb, and if that lining is not dispelled, it can cause uterine cancer. And so, because my body does not do that naturally, I also have to take progesterone to ensure that I do not get another cancer diagnosis. That is gender-affirming care. To conclude, I simply want to leave everyone with the thought that our narrow focus on what is or isn't gender-affirming care and who does or does not use it often leads to unintended consequences for many, not just a few. Everyone deserves the care they need to live in dignity, regardless of their identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heather, and after Heather, Jamie Smith.
Heather, go ahead and raise your hand if you're online by pressing star 3. Okay, go ahead, Heather.
Um, good evening, city council members. Uh, I'm asking you to vote yes on ordinance C-36667 for Spokane to become a shield city. Um, I've lived here longer than anywhere else in my life. I have grown to love and know many people in the 2S LGBTQIA+ community here in Spokane, and I've noticed that there is an intersection with neurodivergent and BIPOC communities as well. So not only are people in the queer community marginalized, but they're often part of another group of people that's marginalized as well. Uh, I'm worried about everyone right now, but I'm most worried about the children in this community. I know children who are missing school because they're afraid. Uh, they're too frightened to access gender-affirming care because of possibly being targeted. People are afraid to even switch, um, or they are being denied, um, identity markers that match their, who they are, like birth certificates. We know the journey to getting care is not easy, and the science about gender-affirming care for minors favors care because care saves lives. The public is being told that trans adults and children are a threat everywhere we go. We're being told they don't matter, that they're being disappeared from public landmarks, and it's terrifying. Um, and I'm seeing this, and there are so many places where these people are not safe. I'm just wondering, can we be a city that treats these people in a safe way? Can we be a shelter for them? And I think we can, and I'm encouraged to hear so many people tonight also share that sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next is Jamie Smith, and after Jamie, be Andrea Brumbah.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you. I am a member of Spokane City District 3, and I'm here to testify in support of ordinance C-36667. As many have pointed out earlier, Spokane's motto is "We all belong." And that is absolutely true for all members of this community, including the 2S LGBTQIA+ community. This ordinance is a critical step forward in making sure that the values that we have as Spokaneites are maintained and protected. Spokane is a city that genuinely cares for its citizens and works to keep us all safe and in a position to grow and fully thrive. And while you can't protect every single aspect of our lives, the things that we can protect are our data and our access to safe healthcare. By creating a framework to work with 2S LGBTQIA+ leaders and create a liaison between the council, police, and the LGBTQIA+ community, you're ensuring that no policies about us are written without us. Inclusion and data protections benefit all people, not just this community. And everyone would benefit from these protections. No one other than you and your doctor should have a say in how you care for your body, and that shouldn't be weaponized for prejudice and hate. This ordinance is also in alignment with the treaties that we have with our tribal partners to provide healthcare and support these communities. With that, I want to thank you again for taking the time to create this ordinance and move it forward and allowing us all to testify. The testimonies, though, so far have been overwhelmingly positive, and I think a genuine reflection of the care and love that Spokane members have for their community, whether-
Thank you, Jamie, your time is up. Next is Andrea, online.
Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Andrea Brumbah. I live in Spokane in District 3, and I am here to, uh, show my support of ordinance C-36667. I think the first part of the ordinance says it all. Uh, whereas the city of Spokane is committed to fostering a community where all individuals are treated with dignity, equity, and respect regarding of sexual, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. I think it's a shame that we need an ordinance to make it clear that all of our community members are treated equally, but here we are. Um, it's not about being special, it's about all of us being considered equal. I urge you to vote yes on ordinance C-36667. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Pam Colmeyer, and then Race Broom.
Hi, thank you. I'm Dr. Pam Colmeyer. I am a resident of Spokane, and I'm in strong support of this, not just because I'm an emergency physician and I have seen people in crisis. I teach suicide prevention classes regularly. I'm very committed to saving lives, largely because I lost one of my own kids who was transgender, non-binary to suicide two years ago. And I will tell you, gender-affirming care saves lives. Privacy of their medical records saves lives. Letting them compete in the sports that fit with their identity saves lives. Accepting them saves lives. We have in our city mission, the city council mission, we protect the quality of life. If we can't save lives, what quality of life do we have? I really urge you not just to pass this ordinance, to make it become law, but please make it unanimous and send a message to everyone that this is a place of inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Race Broom?
Go ahead.
All right. Hello, city council. Thank you all for allowing us to speak on this issue today. I'm here to show my support and urge you all to vote yes for ordinance C-3667. I've been queer and living in Spokane my entire life. As I've grown up, I've experienced anti-LGBTQIA and Two-Spirit rhetoric more and more. This ordinance is no longer an issue about what is right or wrong according to someone's religious beliefs. It is about giving LGBTQIA+ and Two-Spirited people the same common decency as cis and heterosexual people. The least you can do is to help ensure the safety, especially in the current climate. A study was conducted by the Trevor Project in 2023 that found passing anti-trans laws increased teen suicide attempts by 72%. So just remember when- So just remember, when you vote, kids' lives are at stake. And to my community, regardless of how they vote tonight, stay loud, stay proud, stay safe, and never sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexander, Alexander Verata? And after Alexander, Emmy Schwartz.
Alexander, if you're online.
Sorry about that. My name is Alexander. I live here in the city of Spokane, and I am once again speaking in my capacity as a private citizen in strong support of C 36667. I want to apologize in advance for my pacing and brevity, because two minutes at the podium is a very tight window I was not prepared for. Last week, I spoke in a general sense about why this ordinance is needed. Today, I want to address a point of opposition. I'm repeatedly hearing resistance to this ordinance stemming from concerns about the transgender population of Spokane. These are not debates of fiscal responsibility or logistic complication. Many of those opposed say they are concerned for the well-being of adolescents who identify as transgender. They fear minors having access to important medical care and the possibility for regret later in life. Taking these words at face value, while I appreciate that the disapproval is coming from a place of care for young folks, those protective efforts are facing the wrong way. A survey of 28,000 presently or formerly trans identified individuals in the U.S. found that only 3% of them ever experienced core detransition, and even smaller percentage of that group had medically transitioned. Regret rates after gender-affirming surgery are approximately 1%, which is remarkably low. For context, knee replacement surgeries have a roughly 20% regret rate. Corrective spinal surgery has a 21% regret rate. Generally, surgery regret rates across all studied categories are about 14%. You are 20 times more likely to regret getting your knee replaced than a trans man is to receive a double mastectomy. The reality is that if you really care for the well-being of trans kids and you want to help them, statistically, you will have a much better chance of protecting them from things like depression, anxiety, substance abuse, and suicide by supporting them, as they seriously weigh the benefits and drawbacks of gender-affirming treatment under professional guidance from accredited healthcare providers. At the end of the day, while there are definitely people opposed to trans rights out of downpunching contempt, there are also people who just don't know very much about us with opinions informed by reductive caricatures of our experiences. I am trans. I love my quiet, beautifully mundane life, and the things that I want are things that I want for everybody in and outside of my community. I just want everyone to have decent healthcare. I want everyone to have equitable employment opportunities and freedom from violence.
Your time is up. Emmy Schwartz, and after Emmy, be Karen Pooley.
Hello, council. Thank you for giving us the time to all speak today. I want to give extra thanks to Councilman Navarrete, Councilwoman Zepone, and Councilwoman Dillon for bringing forth this ordinance. I live in District 2, and it makes me really proud to know that you were both a part of this. I'm gonna be very brief. Most of the things I want to say have already been said, but council members, your jobs are to represent the ideals and values of Spokaneites, and Spokaneites have shown up tonight to tell you what our values and ideals are, and those are protecting our LGBTQ+ communities and ensuring that healthcare is something that's accessible for all without people having to worry about their information being shared. So please, I'm urging you to vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Pooley?
Hi, council. Last week, my testimony in opposition to this ordinance concentrated on how this ordinance would eviscerate the overwhelming voice of Washingtonians in passing the Parents' Bill of Rights. Last week, I also asked this council, why are you refusing to consider the rights and protection of the female population of Spokane? This week, I'll concentrate on statistics. It is 0.05% of the total population of the U.S. who identifies as transgender. Since the population of Spokane is approximately 233,000 people, this means there are approximately 116 people who identify as transgender in Spokane. The female population of Spokane is 50.3% of the total population, or 117,119 women. We are failing as a society when we are concerned about serving the emotional and physical well-being of 116 people while totally disregarding the same emotional and physical well-being of 117,199 women. The trans people who testified tonight talk about wanting to feel safe. So do women. And if this council votes to approve the ordinance essentially saying yes, we're okay with overriding the rights of 117,119 women, where will you find the money? Last month, the United States DOJ issued a warning to the state of Maine, telling Maine to stop allowing women or men in women's sports or face the loss of federal funds. While some of you may not like the current U.S. administration policies, that really makes no difference. Therefore, I ask you to consider the last statistic. The city will face the loss of $33 million in federal funds because of both this ordinance and because of DEI. That leads me to my last question. Where will you find this $33 million?
And thank you, Karen, your time is up.
Thank you.
That concludes our public testimony and the council commentary.
I'll go first. I just want to thank everyone for your patience and for being here and sharing tonight. And I really want to thank our intern Danielle Groth with Gonzaga, who was really instrumental in drafting this ordinance, as well as several constituents who wrote a couple months ago in favor of this, and all the different organizations that gave feedback, helped guide this process, Spectrum, Odyssey, Youth, INBA, Spokane Pride, Trans Spokane, and many, many more. I kind of want to bring us back a little bit to what this ordinance does. So as previously mentioned, it updates our city human rights code Title 18, which had not been updated in almost a decade. So I think these are long overdue changes, particularly with language around inclusion. Mirrors kind of the state's shield law, but puts that also into code. So it's there for future councils, future mayors, and that really is significant. Also protects the city from collecting or disseminating information about anyone's assigned sex at birth. So we heard a lot about the privacy concerns. Directs the Spokane Police Department to maintain an LGBTQIA 2S+ liaison officer to be a point of contact and help build trust. And then requires the city to conduct an audit and look at a lot of our policies to make sure that they are equitable, that they are safe and affirming, and a lot of feedback that we got around that was particularly at our council meetings. So I think that's something that we're definitely taking to heart. And then finally, codifies protections for employee health coverage, for reproductive healthcare and gender-affirming care, because a right is not a right unless that you can access it. I believe that a world without trans people has never existed, and it never will. That's the bottom line. And really wanting to get this moving forward, it's bigger than a president or a state that has banned care. This ordinance is also really about joy. It's about our commitment and affirmation to being a safe and welcoming city. So I look forward to celebrating the passage of this ordinance. I look forward to the signage of this ordinance and the implementation of this ordinance, which I'm really hopeful will stand the test of time. My message, again, for the trans community is that if you are trans, you are loved, and in the end, love will always win. And I really want to thank Councilmember Zepone, Councilmember Navarrete for co-sponsoring, and just thank you again for being here tonight.
Council President, we have one individual online. I was just gonna see Wyatt, I believe, signed up. Yes. Go ahead, Wyatt.
This here, I wasn't sure if you got my message. Okay, so hello, my name is Wyatt, and I urge you to vote yes on ordinance C 36667. I have lived here in Spokane Valley my entire life. I own a house in Otis Orchards, and I'm proud to call Spokane my home. I want to settle down here. I'm engaged to be married, and me and my partner are very interested in using only local services in our wedding. My partner works for a small business downtown, and we know every dollar we spend here in our city stays here. That being said, we rarely spend time in the valley. We don't feel safe at most places around us, so we both work downtown. We go to events downtown. We spend time with our friends downtown. I've heard similar things from other queer people who live in the valley. It means so much to me to have a place where I feel safe walking down the street, holding my partner's hand, but that doesn't feel as stable anymore. I've been called slurs just walking into work because people have been emboldened by hateful legislation around the country. I work with LGBT youth, and they've had, things have gotten bad enough that adults have yelled slurs at them and thrown garbage at teenage kids. I think this is an incredible city, and this ordinance will show people that their hate is not welcome here. I know that hate, I know that people can have hate. I grew up in a very strict religion, and I was not accepted when I came out as transgender. I lost my family, my mom, my dad, my aunts, my uncles, my cousins, and every friend I ever knew. But it's been worth it because I've found community here in Spokane. I've been able to build something so much better. I have a friend group who's become like family to me. I have a woman in my life who I call my mom. She took me under her wing and has treated me better than my mother ever has. I've had friends that are so close, I consider them like my brothers and sisters. I've been able to help others who have lost housing because they were kicked out of their family due to homophobia in Texas. They came here to Spokane to be in a safe place. She now has a job and housing and is so happy to live here in Spokane. She's only five years younger.
Thank you, Wyatt, your time is up. Sorry, we overlooked you. Continue on with council commentary. None other? Are we ready to vote? Councilmember Klitschke.
Hey, thanks. I just want to thank everybody for the really excellent testimony in favor of this ordinance. I think you really did a great job dispelling some myths, explaining the situation, and trying to bring some really reality and humanity to this issue. This does mostly apply to city employees, so I just want to flag that and say that I hope that this spreads the concept further. Freedom, privacy, bodily autonomy, medical privacy saves lives. This needs to catch on in institutions, corporations, insurance companies, or all over. They need to join us in protecting our communities and not being afraid of the bullying and the threats of the federal government or anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Navarrete.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming here tonight. There were some harsh words shared, but also I hope you all felt the support for this ordinance. Church-state separation means that Christian nationalists and their lawmakers' allies can't use our country's laws to impose their narrow beliefs on others or misuse religious freedom to deny LGBTQIA 2+ people equal rights. But that is exactly what is happening now. What is happening now is that the new administration is discriminating in the name of religion, denying healthcare and erasure of transgender rights and identities. It started with painting over the Washington DC Black Lives Matter mural, erasing the stories of Navajo cult talkers on the Pentagon website to raiding towns and homes where non-criminal immigrants are being detained and incarcerated without due process. Are we not the land of the free? Are we not the land where we are free to express who we are? Do we have to fit a specific mold to have our rights respected? Why are people so infatuated to tell other people how to live their lives? They're not asking anything from you but respect. Ask yourselves, are we really the land of the free? Those not affected yet by this fascist ruling that's happening right now, just wait. I am proud to vote yes and to be a cool sponsor on this ordinance because I am one of the brave who still believe in diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's not going anywhere. Or as someone, Wise said it best, the true definition of DEI is "They will earn income." I will not stand to see anyone not living in liberty because I will always seek justice for all, and I will not see anyone's identity be erased. So I will vote yes on this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bingo?
All right. I also want to thank everybody for... Let me try that again. I also want to thank everybody for coming out here, and in the back there on the table as you leave, I have cards. Anybody who would like to go out to coffee or get some lunch, I would happily go out with you and share, because I think there is a fair amount of misunderstanding on this issue, and I think there's a fair misunderstanding of my position in this as well, so I'd like to share that. For those who didn't read the Bingo amendment, I'm gonna read some of it for you, because I think it's important to note. So in this, in my recitals, it says, whereas the city of Spokane is committed to fostering a community where all individuals are treated with dignity and respect, and where families, parents, and religious communities are free to live according to their beliefs, and whereas the city of Spokane recognizes the inherent worth of all individuals and seeks to provide a safe and welcoming environment for all who seek or for all who reside in or visit Spokane, including those who identify as LGBTQIA 2S+, and whereas the city of Spokane also affirms the fundamental rights of parents to direct the upbringing, medical care, and moral instruction of their children, free from coercion or interference by government actors, and whereas individual conscience and religious freedom are protected rights under the United States and Washington constitutions, and the city of Spokane respects and protects the ability of individuals and institutions to operate consistent with sincerely held beliefs, whereas the respect for LGBTQIA 2S+ individuals must be balanced against the legitimate and growing public concern regarding the long-term impact and ethical implications of administering puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and gender reassignment surgeries to minors, and whereas the Spokane Municipal Code Title 18 and state law currently offer protections for the LGBTQIA 2S+ community against discrimination, including protections against discrimination based on gender identity and sexual orientation, but these provisions do not incorporate or account for public concern over growing, or excuse me, over gender-affirming care for minors. There's a lot more that's in here. Whereas the city of Spokane finds it necessary to ensure that municipal funds are not used to subsidize or promote irreversible medical interventions for children under the age of 18, except where expressly required by federal or state law. And then it moves on, and it goes on to say, you know, all the things that were coming in Councilmember Dillon's ordinance here, what it, a lot of it that is being misconstrued here says that I was trying to do a lot to prevent things. What I was trying to do, in many cases, was to include protections for people who had sincerely held moral, ethical, or religious reasons. So this includes, one of the things that was written here, this includes protecting the rights of parents to make decisions regarding the upbringing and healthcare of their children. City of Spokane believes in and affirms the right of adults to seek, obtain, provide care that aligns with their values and beliefs, except as otherwise required by state or federal law. No provision of this title. It goes on. So there's a lot in here that says, I want people to be able to live the way that they want to live their life in the city of Spokane. I don't think you should be discriminated against, and I think that includes people who have sincerely held religious, moral, or ethical objections to this. What my amendments did, specifically with gender-affirming care or puberty blockers or cross-sex hormones, said that it wouldn't be allowed, taxpayer dollars wouldn't be spent for those provisions in the city of Spokane. It doesn't say that we're gonna ban it, it just says that taxpayer dollars weren't gonna pay for it. It also went on to say that people who, in here, what I hear a lot of, people want to live their true authentic selves, and you know what? Go for it. There are people who disagree for sincerely held religious, moral, or ethical reasons that also are asking, can we also live according to this? And I think that that's a fair proposition. It's a live and let live situation that I'm totally cool with. I think that's a great idea. I have heard a lot tonight that people like me don't think that trans people exist or should exist, and that couldn't be further from the truth. I have lived my entire life trying to stand up for the broken, for the marginalized, for those who haven't had a voice. those who haven't had a voice and every single person in here is important and is valuable and deserves to live the way that they want to live. I am irritated at the way that people like me are portrayed in this conversation. I heard one person say, you know, that we're painting with broad strokes. And I think that happens on both sides of this argument, right? And I don't think that's good, which is why I offered my card, because I would love to go out to coffee with anybody who would love to sit down and chat. This is actually how one of my close friends now came to work for me, was on a difficult issue like this. We went out to coffee, we found that we had a lot in common, we found that we cared about each other pretty deeply. She came to work for me years later. So, in this, what I want to say is that I will be voting against this because I think that there are a lot, a lot, a lot. When you look at studies, this is a very nuanced discussion. You can find studies that will support and you'll find studies that oppose. And in something like this where there are irreversible procedures that can happen on children, that is something that I won't support and can't support. And so, tonight again, thank you everybody for being here, thank you for testifying. And again, if anybody has any questions, I'll be in the gallery afterward and I'd love to chat with you.
Councilmember Spohn?
Yeah. Councilmember Bingo, I'm not sure if you know, but also, death is also irreversible. And if people die, they can't come back from that. And so...
Yes.
I'm glad to be supported in this and I want to thank everyone so much for coming out and especially our trans folks who testified, who are brave and came up and testified and out of themselves in this process too. Thank you for that. Your words convey a lot to the community and hearing it straight from your mouth to the public, to the public record, is incredibly powerful. So, thank you for speaking that. Since I've been on council, I've been really proud to advocate for various LGBTQ protections and rights. We actually got gender-affirming care at the city a couple of years ago from the advocacy behind the scenes. And so, I was very proud of that. I worked with the former administration to secure those rights for city employees. And I think that partly what's missing from this conversation is that you can't protect people and say you can live your life, but you just can't do it this certain way. And so, I'm here to stand with our trans community, our LGBTQ community. Thank you for being here. We'll continue to have a champion in me and other council members here because in Spokane we all belong.
Thank you. Anything, Councilwoman Kacar?
I will just say, I'm very conflicted by this, not because of what's in the ordinance, because I support all that's been said, but I had a presentation from our finance department that we are in a financial strait. So, this year, this will cost the city $370,000. Next year will be $440,000 and it'll be projected to be 5% every year after that, when we're already millions of dollars in the hole. That's the one side. I'm currently caring for someone who's going through gender-affirming care. So, there is challenges and there is nuances and really, who pays and who doesn't pay and who gets it and who doesn't get it, really is a difficult position for us as a council. Again, this is for the employees of the city of Spokane. I'm hoping we're setting a great example for other employers to go forward with this, but I really am concerned with the financial cost it's going to cost the city. So, when you hear the city does not have resources for other things that you might want to do, you'll have to remember how you encouraged us to spend the dollars that we have going forward. That's a reality. Please. I did not interrupt anyone when they came to the podium. And we've had a really good night for a very charged discussion over something that means a lot to everyone in here. Now, if you had let me finish, I will be voting for this, but I want you to know, I just have financial reservations for the impact of the entire city going forward. And so, please remember that. As other things come before us, times will get tighter and we will have to continue to make very difficult financial decisions for the entire city. Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Did I cut you off?
I got it.
Thank you. What was that?
Five to two.
Five to two. That was five to two. Thank you. That concludes our legislative agenda.
We actually got a first reading ordinance.
Oh, we got a first reading ordinance. Ms. Fister?
First reading ordinance, C 36668 relating to emergency medical transport in the city of Spokane, amending sections 10.47.010, .030, .050, .070, .080, .090 and .150, adopting new sections 10.47.061, .062 and .131 and repealing sections 10.47.040, .060, .120, .130 and .140 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
We have several comments. That will be Sunshine Wigan. Will Hewings?
Sunshine, born in Spokane. This is about the ambulances and things, right?
Yes.
Okay, I highly support this. Anything you need to do to help them. I was at a, one of the worst overdoses I ever saw the other day and I actually saw an EMT worker where he kicked the medical box and he was like, "Dang it," you know? And then they ended up saving him and the guy had some brain damage and so, whatever you need to do...
Sunshine, excuse me. Will, could you close the door, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Sunshine.
So, anything you need to do to support those guys, I'm very happy to say that here in Spokane, we have so many people that want to be AMR workers that we actually have a waiting list, which is cool because not all cities have that much oomph to want to help this crisis and whatnot with the fentanyl. And I just highly, highly support anything that you guys need to do and then if you can afford newer vehicles for them and things like that. And I can't tell you enough, thanks for the new van you gave to Stars. We are using it and we are getting people into treatment faster because of it. So, I highly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Next will be Will Hewings and after Will, Justin Haller.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hewings and I live downtown Spokane. I oppose ordinance C 36668. Yes, it's been 25 years since Spokane updated our emergency medical transport ordinance. Yes, aligning it with state laws, RCWs, WACs and patient protections makes sense. But once again, you are ignoring the real crisis ripping Spokane apart right now. The fentanyl overdose epidemic that's burying our emergency medical responders. This just isn't about paperwork. In 2024, we saw a 45% increase in overdose deaths. Over 338 lives lost, mostly from fentanyl. AMR Spokane is collapsing under the weight of 100,000 emergency calls a year, many of them overdose-related. Imagine if you're, someone has to show up constantly, day after day and treat and try to save the lives of people dying of fentanyl. You guys don't seem to be doing much about that. I mean, it's embarrassing. I mean, I go on Spokane News and there's just overdoses. Do you guys actually care about that? But tonight, all these people showed up about the LGBT community and I appreciate what you did recognize. I mean, you guys should be focused on that, but it doesn't seem like you care. And as someone that speaks on this all the time, for years, someone that lives downtown, someone that, this is my precinct, that I ran for, that, you know, and it's my neighborhood and I complain about it, you do nothing about it. Tonight, I'm going to go to my apartment that I pay rent on and there's going to be...
And thank you, Will. Justin? Did you want to speak on this?
Justin Haller, District 1. I don't remember there being a dollar amount on the ambulances. Was there a dollar amount attached to this?
They'll be coming forth.
Okay, so, so one more blank check, as always, just like the parks and any other agenda with Lisa Brown. You didn't, you don't seem to care when Lisa Brown wants to spend money, but when Nadine wanted to spend money on things, you sharpshotted her on just about everything. It's just really sad, the partisanship that goes on. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but as always, I'd like to see you get the best value you can for the city and maybe, instead of rewarding people with Narcan copious amounts of times, get some treatment, get some rehab. Or, like I've said before and I'll say it again, jail, rehab or take it out of town. You wouldn't allow your kid to routinely sit in front of your house and rob and steal from you and allow their friends to rob and steal from you and shoot up and defecate and urinate in your neighborhood and on your front lawn. And sadly, a couple of members have experienced that firsthand and it's sad. And most people do not do anything about the problem until it shows up to their front doorstep. Don't wait till it shows up to your front doorstep before you do something about the problem.
Thank you, Justin. Now, that concludes our legislative agenda for tonight. Thank you all. We will now transition to open forum. And with open forum, again, as we have been conducting tonight, no clapping, no cheering, no booing, no public outbursts and please direct all your comments to the chair and you will have two minutes and we will start with, go ahead, Mr. Bird.
Jesse. After Jesse, we'll go to Justin and then Derek Azaro.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson and the council. I'm here because crime is a big problem in downtown, especially with juveniles. Friday night, I was at the plaza and I witnessed four juvenile kids beat up a man sitting there waiting for the bus. Security wasn't around and when you hauled up for security, they hopped on the bus or ignored you. A driver pulled his bus in, picked the guy off the street and left on the city bus. There was no one around, no police for at least an hour. And like, these kids are always causing problems downtown. I spoke to a transit officer today and he was like, he has people that want to come take the bus, that want to come downtown and visit, but he says they can't because of the crime, especially with kids. And I know drugs are the big thing too, but if we can find a way to initiatives or programs where we can get the kids off the streets of downtown and get them into activities, like have activities for the kids at the parks and stuff, like the valley does, but more or less like, hey, let's get you guys do some choir or sports or something where it's not just put on by city councils, also put on the community. Because once we clean up the community with the kids, we might be able to help curtail some of the drug problems because drugs are getting to the kids and that's where crime happens. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up is Justin and then Derek and then Will.
Hi, my name's Justin Haller, District 1. I emailed some of you about two different things. One was the firebombed RV that happened in my neighborhood and I contacted the appropriate people and I got a response from one of you and I appreciate that. I also contacted people about the new bike lane and I did not get an email response, even though this certain person claimed that they're way too busy to pay attention during a city council meeting for their part-time job, yet they have another full-time job teaching, not going to say who it is, and I fear for what those kids are being taught in that classroom. But there's a bike lane that's going in on Maxwell between Petite, Petit, Patoot, whatever, and Walnut by the 7-Eleven, to give you reference, and the community center. I rode that road. It's a 50-foot wide road. 1.25 million and change for a bike lane that short? And who rides it? Who rides below 45 degrees? Raise their hand. Nobody. Very few people and unless you own, Kazuntai, unless you own thick gloves or you have neoprene covers, chances are you probably don't ride in the winter or below 45 degrees. Golden River Front Park, just sit there. Watch how many people ride below 45 degrees. And this thing here, you got half right, there's a bike lane on one side, but then you took out parking. Far more people drive their car than park. I'll end it on this. This is a quote from James Brown, "Talking Loud and Saying Nothing." Like a dull knife, just ain't cutting. Like, talking loud, saying nothing. Just saying nothing, just saying nothing. You can't tell me how to run my life. You can't tell me how, you can't tell me how to keep my business sound. You can't tell me what I'm doing wrong. You keep jiving, singing that same old funny song.
Derek and then Will and then Brian Hanson.
Derek Azaro, supporting District 1. How many times do you see me come up here and speak on behalf of the kids in this community, trying to keep them safe on the street? I've been doing it for years. I can tell you, I just attended for the second time the meeting for Save Our Spokane Group. I've seen women there testifying that they've lost their children to fentanyl. But your priorities in the city, as far as the mayor goes, is on giving money to the nonprofits that you're not even looking at. That's why I spoke against them earlier. You need to look at their tax returns with detail. Look at how much money they're getting paid. Catholic Charities, $250,000 to two leaders. Jules Helping Hands, Julia Garcia, she's giving herself money. As she gets more money, she keeps giving herself more money. Why don't you start taking a stand against fentanyl? Why is this mayor not going after fentanyl? Your priority's in the wrong place. You don't care about the children in this community because if you did, you'd be paying attention to these mothers that are losing their children to it. You don't hear their voices because you were invited to that meeting and some of you didn't go. One of them did. Maybe the others didn't have time. But you make time for every time you want to go on TV and take accolades for how you pass an ordinance. You wouldn't need ban the address if you stopped giving money to Catholic charities and Jules Helping Hands and send that to the contractors and the investors that come in the community to build apartments and give a home to the mothers and the kids. It's ridiculous that you keep going on this whole process and paying no attention to the mothers that are losing their children, the mothers and fathers that have get that phone call. They're taking their kids home in a box to dispose of at a cemetery. It's your responsibility as the leaders of this community to take notice of that. It is your responsibility as a mayor to come to these meetings and speak.
Thank you, Derek.
That's why I come down here and speak against this. Stop giving Catholic charities money.
Derek, your time is up.
Stop giving Jules Helping Hands money.
Will is up.
Focus on what's there.
Your time is up.
You don't give me the golden, I don't get the golden buzzer? Maybe I better bring some more facts.
Point of order.
Yes.
Because that's what I go after, is the money.
Will and then Brian Hanson and then Sunshine.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewings and I live downtown Spokane. I agree with Derek. So, let's see. I am beyond fed up with Mayor Lisa Brown and Spokane Police Chief Kevin Hall. For years, I've stood before you warning about the collapse of public safety in downtown Spokane, my neighborhood, my precinct, and for years, you've been, pretty much seems like you're ignoring us, but you will defend these people that showed up tonight, that left, that's all they care about. I've watched my neighborhood precinct spiral into a hellhole of homelessness, filth and lawlessness. Everywhere you look, homeless drug addicts lighting up fentanyl in broad daylight sprawled out on the sidewalk like it's normal. This isn't just a public health emergency anymore, it's a full-blown public safety nightmare. People are getting stabbed and assaulted, just like that one you said at the STA Bus Plaza. You got little street kids and you got homeless people, you got drug addicts everywhere. It's disgusting and it doesn't seem like you care, none of you. It's disgusting, and it doesn't seem like you care, none of you. I mean, it's pretty sad. I don't even go out at night. I don't even go and enjoy my life. I can't even ride my bike around in my own neighborhood because I don't feel like dealing with these frickin' people that are wandering out in my neighborhood, in front of my building, where I live and pay rent. You guys need to do something. This is ridiculous. And I'm gonna keep on, keep on, but keep on coming, and I'm gonna let you guys know.
Thank you, Will.
Brian, and then Sunshine, and then Dream.
President Ferguson, may it please the city council. My name is Brian Hanson. Little background for me, so I can set the context for what I'm about to speak. I grew up in abject poverty. I did not know my dad, my mom. I was her third child. She had me when she was 18. I put myself through the paces. I served this country in the Navy. I was a police officer. I was the sheriff's deputy in Whitman County, a police officer in King County. So I have served this state, and I have served this country. You may recognize the name a little bit, because there was a recent Supreme Court case, Jules Helping Hands versus Brian Hanson. Well, I'm the Brian Hanson. I'm the guy behind Prop One. And that proposition passed 75%. That's three quarters. Certain members of this city council have been quoted in the paper saying, just because a majority votes for something, doesn't mean that we have to agree. And that's fine. If it's 50%, plus one person, exercise your independent judgment to your heart's content. But when 75% of your constituency clamors for this, then you need to listen, because if you don't, you're an autocracy. You're no longer a democracy. You are essentially imposing your will on the people, and that's not what we elected you guys for. Councilman Zepone, Councilwoman Klitsky, I am one of your constituents. Please recognize the fact that these kids, we've heard a lot tonight about protecting the city's most vulnerable. Well, what is more vulnerable than small children? They haven't had the chance to make the life's mistakes that these adults who are zombies walking around our parks and our schools and everything. How many of you on the council read any of the affidavits that was filed in the city councils or in the city's nuisance suit against Jules Helping Hands and Camp Hope? Okay? If you read those, you would be motivated. Maybe you don't like the thousand-foot buffer. That's fine. The state prohibits liquor stores within 500 feet of the school. Give me 500 feet, but protect these children, please. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Sunshine, and then Dream, and then Eugene.
Sunshine, born in Spokane. So we had an overdose at one of Jules Helping Hands shelters where the guy had a bat with nails. What a safe shelter. Last time we had these church shelters, they collapsed because of the violence. These are not safe shelters. The dogs are not locked up that are violent, and it has affected me. The guy had the new, the muzzle hanging from the collar, and it was just hanging there. And they're like, everybody, of course, is like, oh, but this dog's normally really good, sorry, you know, blah, blah, blah. It almost bit me three times. These are not safe shelters. I do not support this dynamic. I do support the dynamic of it for the ones that are mentally ill, physically ill, et cetera, but anything beyond that, the adult fentanyl users, et cetera, there are very dangerous. And that's all I'm gonna say on that, because, I mean, we need to help our people. But this is not the right way. We need to build proper shelters for them. And then another thing, too. So schools, this is a popping case that just, it was a whistleblower, a cop that did this. There is, for schools, there and churches, et cetera, there is a type of insurance called SAM for sexual assault. And a lot of these kids, so the school board, the kid comes home and he peed his pants. And because they have this insurance, they don't have to tell the mother or the father that, hey, your kid was almost abducted today. Or the girl that comes to school and says, my dad's beating me three times, and it took her bloody in a hospital before they said, okay, we're gonna look past the insurance and, you know, do something now. We're mandated reporters, but at the same time, because we have this insurance, we don't have to mandate report. And I think this whistleblowing case in the school in Buffalo is a huge thing, and we need to pay attention to our kids.
Dream, and then lastly, Eugene Knowles.
Good evening once again, council president, city council. I wanted to talk about this dais. This dais faces y'all. But if we look around the room, you know, we've got the people, we've got the press, and we've got the politicians, and we are all parts of this process. And y'all are elevated to a level of policymaking power that we don't have. But the whole point of what we're doing here, especially at an open forum, is to be able to all participate co-equally. So, and the structure of the room should reflect that. This dais should be somewhere that can face both y'all and the press and the people. Another thing I just wanted to briefly mention earlier in the meeting, talking about the ordinance of liquor control, I believe, distance from things. Councilmember Bingle used the phrase clean and sober, and I just wanted to bring attention to, that's not a useful phrase, saying the word sober accomplishes the same task. And by equating cleanliness with soberness, we're equating dirtiness with drug use, and that does nothing to help people who are struggling with addiction. So I just wanted to bring that to attention and call you in about that. Thank you. Have a.
Good evening, president, council. Eugene Knowles, been living here in Spokane since 2010. Well, last week I got lucky, and this week I got lucky. I started out with the color-coded thing in the left hand and the right hand, and it's good that I didn't finish, because I get a chance to kind of more or less get a little repetition in here. Somebody asked me about my number five, but, so I'll get to the issue here quickly. I started with the right hand. It's up high. It's blue and green. That's for people who are looking good and got money in their pockets. And then I'm gonna go to the other end, which is the red, seven, eight, and nine. That's what I'm gonna focus on. Somebody asked me about number five. That has to come next week. Not enough time. Number five and number six is where the cities fail. I'll get these numbers cleared out later. But number seven are campers. Number eight is the problem that follows that is street refugees, and number nine are these people getting killed, dying of fentanyl and dying of stabbings or whatever. I'm gonna go to number five next week, because that is where the solution keeps failing here. That's the shelters. And they try to dump it all on this current council. The only name I'll use is Mayor Condon with those blue tents out there. He blew it. The next administration with Camp Hope and Trent Shelter, they blew it. So they want to dump all this on the current council. I'll clear it up next week with number five. Somebody asked me about number five. If we're gonna get these shelters, it's gonna take a while.
Thank you, Eugene, for that. That concludes our open forum for this evening. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved to second to adjourn. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Thank you all again. We are adjourned.